You guys seem ready. Everybody's getting a little bit quiet. All right, we ready? Everyone take a moment to silence their cell phones. We have Troop 91 here tonight with the Boy Scouts, who are going to help us with the Pledge of Allegiance and then watch a little bit of our council meeting. So, boys, why don't you come up to the front and help us lead the Pledge of Allegiance while we'll all stand and face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, before you leave, could each of you say your name and what grade you're in and where you go to school as you go make your way back to your seat? So, start with the first one.
My name is William Puser and I'm in 7th grade.
At?
Oh, Ashville Middle School.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Emery and I go to Ashville Middle and I'm also in 7th grade.
Okay.
My name is Jack and I go to Ashville Middle and I'm in 7th grade.
My name is Van. I'm in 6th grade and I go to Ashville Middle.
My name is Blake. I'm in 8th grade and I go to Ashville Middle.
My name is Vincent. I'm homeschooled and I'm in 8th grade.
My name is Aiden and I'm in 7th grade and I go to Reynolds.
My name is Ben. I'm in 7th grade and I go to Ashville.
My name is Mitchell. I'm a 10th grader and I go to Asheville High.
My name is Garrett. I'm in 7th grade and I go to Ashville Middle.
My name is Frank. I'm in 6th and I go to French Broad River Academy.
My name is Carlos. I'm in 7th grade and I'm at Carolina Day School.
My name is James and I'm in 7th grade at French Broad River Academy.
My name is Sam. I'm in 6th grade and I go to Ashville Catholic.
My name is Grayson. I'm in 6th grade and I go to Invest Collegiate.
My name is Alice. I'm in 9th grade and I go to ICI Charter School.
My name is Mark Lastinger. I'm in 7th grade. I go to Carolina Day School.
My name is Asher and I go to Evergreen and I'm in 6th grade.
Thank you, boys. Thank you for helping us out tonight.
As a longtime scout, I'm really proud to see y'all here at this meeting. And I noticed at least one ordered the arrow patch. Congratulations to you on that.
All right. Tonight, I would like us to begin by having a moment of silence. As you probably all know, our former council member, Mark Hunt, lost his son this last week and has shared that news with all of us. Of course, it was in the paper as well. And Mark and his family are in our thoughts and prayers. He is making his way back to Asheville and we'll have a memorial service for Taylor, his son, I believe, on the 19th. They're going to have it. But if we could just take a moment and have a moment of silence for Mark and his family. All right, thank you. And again, a couple of other items. Tonight is the 3rd night of Hanukkah. Happy Hanukkah. And we will not have another council meeting until January, January, Maggie, if you can remember, January 12th. So, since we won't see anyone until then after this meeting, Merry Christmas to everyone. Everyone, happy holidays. All right, so next on our agenda, we don't have any proclamations tonight. We have the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions, comments, any items on the consent agenda you'd like considered separately? Or do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there anyone wishing to comment on the motion to approve the consent agenda? Okay, now, this is a big moment. This is the second vote of our new council members. They voted for Vice Mayor, but this is their official business-type voting. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right. Congratulations. It's a big moment. The next item on our agenda is a presentation, Development Review and Preserving Downtown Character, and our newish Planning Director, Todd O'Callaghan.
You got it. Perfect, Mayor. Very good.
All right, so he's going to make this presentation for us.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Todd O'Callaghan, Planning and Urban Design Director. At City Council's November 10th council meeting, council directed staff to present an evaluation of the city's development review process as well as strategies to preserve downtown character. In particular, Strategy 6 of the city's Downtown Master Plan states that after a four-year pilot period, that the city should evaluate the current development review process, which was really changed as a result of the adoption of the 2009 Master Plan. And just to give you a brief overview of the presentation, I'm just going to start off with a brief review of the context of the downtown area, which is also zoned the central business district for the city of Asheville. I'll review the changes that were made by the Downtown Master Plan, which again was adopted in 2009. Next, I'll review the current development review process, as well as review some of the development trends that have occurred since 2010. I'll then talk a little bit about strategies to expand council review in terms of the development review process, as well as strategies to preserve downtown character. For an overview of downtown in general, again, the downtown is zoned Central Business District. The city's Unified Development Ordinance describes the Central Business District as the urban center of Asheville in western North Carolina. It is an area where private and public investment is encouraged to preserve the CBD as the primary retail, office, hotel, institutional, cultural, and entertainment center of our community. It is a further purpose of this district to encourage a strong supportive retail center along with high-density residential development, which will complement other downtown uses and surrounding neighborhoods, while slowing down the negative impacts of urban sprawl. A high priority in the downtown is placed on the design, integrating new uses into and with existing architecture, which is also very respectful and cohesive manner with the existing historical framework of the downtown. Further, multimodal transportation strategies are encouraged in the downtown. Now for a brief history and what the development context was like in 2007 prior to the adoption of the Downtown Master Plan. There were several community concerns at the time. It was a time before, obviously before the Great Recession where development was in full swing and Asheville was receiving a number of applications and projects where the heights of buildings and the mass and scale were quite large. And the community was concerned with the impact of those types of developments and what that might have on the historical nature and character of the downtown. There was also no height limit in the Central Business District, and that was in place since 1997 when the UDO was enacted. Furthermore, there was an unpredictable development review process. Most of the development applications that came before council were done through a conditional use permit process, which is a quasi-judicial type of review process where there's a number of standards that are reviewed. And those standards could be a little bit subjective. So, it did lead to a more unpredictable review process by the time it came to city council. And the community felt that those hearings were not very productive mechanisms for review. The Downtown Master Plan was adopted in 2009 after extensive public outreach and input. And the plan is grouped into seven main strategies, which are further grouped into three main themes, including experiencing downtown, shaping downtown, and managing downtown. In particular, Strategies 4 and 5 are the strategies that created the hybrid form-based code, the design standards that are codified in the city's Unified Development Ordinance, as well as the updated design guidelines, which were also established. Strategy 6 is the strategy that really focused on changes to the development review process, which I'll go through. As a result of the Master Plan, again, it went from no height limits in the Central Business District to a maximum height of 145 feet in the traditional core area. And outside of that core, the Master Plan established a maximum height of 265 feet, but still within the city's Central Business District. In addition, new design standards were established and were adopted in the UDO, such as street wall heights and building step backs, requirements for fenestration, and other types of strategies to enhance the character of the downtown area. In addition, the development review thresholds were changed. For Level 2 review, which goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission, projects were changed to and reviewed under a threshold of 20,000 square feet to 175,000 square feet. And a Level 3 review, which triggers city council review and approval, is currently at 175,000 square feet or greater, or buildings that are taller than 145 feet. There were several benefits of this process, including more predictability and clarity as the city adopted changes that removed many of the conditional use permits that were previously approved. The building heights were obviously lowered, which was a benefit to the overall character of the downtown. And the new review thresholds also helped to remove certain barriers to housing. Under the previous site plan review threshold in the downtown, there were caps on the number of dwelling units. And that's those dwelling units, depending upon the number, is what triggered the various levels of site plan review. So, those were eliminated in favor of just having a max, a maximum size threshold on the overall size of the building, as well as the limits to the building height. Furthermore, the review thresholds now rely more on earlier review, including the Downtown Commission, which is involved early on in the process to review design guidelines for the downtown. This map gives you a good sort of overview of what the Central Business District boundaries look like, which are shown with the white and black perimeter around the CBD. The red area delineates the traditional downtown core. And that's where the, generally, the intermediate height zone applies, where that's the maximum 145 feet, and that's shown in the yellow areas on this map. The blue areas show the tallest height zone, and that's the maximum overall allowable height of 265 feet. So, you can see that, you know, generally, in the historic area of the CBD, there's a maximum height of 145 feet. And that also pertains to, and is applicable to, the perimeters of the CBD. And that acts as a nice, you know, transition area to the surrounding residential community.
Can you give us an example of a 145-foot-tall building that exists?
I think we've had a number of, you know, residential projects. And I actually have a map that shows where some of those are located in the downtown. But generally, we've seen a lot of these sort of like mid-rise type of residential projects. And those have mostly been, you know, maybe six to eight stories. The, you know, 265 feet would be, you know, well over 20 stories in height if you're looking at from a maximum-story perspective. This table shows basically all the different levels of Level 1, 2, and 3 for the current review process in the downtown. Level 1 is something that's, a project that's under 20,000 square feet. And this basically just gets reviewed at a staff level. Level 2 permits are projects between 20,000 square feet and 175,000 square feet, or again, over 145 feet tall. And as you can see, that the Level 2 process is a much more extensive review process. The developer is required to hold a public meeting. It then goes to the city's Technical Review Committee, which consists of staff members from various departments, such as planning, development services, police, public works, and all those departments. After the Technical Review Committee meets to review the project in terms of its technical review standards and what the UDO requires, the project then gets reviewed by the Downtown Commission. And the main purpose of the Downtown Commission is to review the project and how it aligns with the city's design standards that are codified in the UDO, as well as additional design guidelines, which are currently mandatory review but not mandatory compliance. After the Downtown Commission reviews the project, it would then go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, who reviews the project again in terms of the technical site plan requirements. For Level 3 projects, again, it's for projects that are currently over 175,000 square feet in size or over 145 feet tall. Again, the developer must hold a public meeting with the surrounding neighborhood associations. The Technical Review Committee, again, would then review the project. Project would go to Downtown Commission, who would review the project again in terms of the design guidelines. Planning and Zoning Commission. And then finally, city council reviews the project. So, you know, the current process does have quite an extensive process in terms of the, all the different levels that an applicant, you know, goes through to have their project reviewed in terms of technical compliance, and as well as how the project aligns with the city's design guidelines for the downtown. The development trends in the last couple of years are depicted in this table. Since 2010, there have been 20 total projects proposed in the Central Business District, and four of them have been reviewed by city council, meaning that they've reached that Level 3 review or a conditional use permit review. And as you can see, a lot of development has occurred since 2013. And that's, you know, pretty indicative of just development in the city in general, that there's been this sort of more recent trend in development in all areas of the city. In the downtown in particular, we've seen nine residential projects and five hotel projects. And those are the two main uses, I think, that we've seen in the downtown in the last couple of years, and especially since 2013. This is the map that I was referring to a little bit earlier in terms of, you know, where these projects have been located throughout the downtown. Again, the red area delineates the boundary of the traditional downtown core, and that's where the maximum height level is at 145 feet. So, there have been a number of projects proposed in the traditional downtown core. The yellow circles represent Level 2 projects that were reviewed by Planning and Zoning Commission. The blue represents a Level 3 project. That's the existing BB&amp;T building that is proposed to come before city council in January of 2016. And then the purple represents a conditional zoning project, which again was reviewed by or at the city council level. And that's for the Buncombe County Court Building. The other projects are pretty, or fairly, I think, distributed fairly evenly throughout the Central Business District. And there was only one other project, the Buncombe County Health and Human Services Building, that was reviewed by council. That's outside of the traditional downtown core.
So, of the four projects that came before council since 2010, one was the courthouse, one was DSS, and then BB&amp;T will be one of them. And what was the, oh, the conditional use permit, right?
Yeah. Well, Buncombe County Courthouse were two different applications in the last couple of years.
But those came before us?
Yes.
I see, okay.
And then the Buncombe County Health and Human Services Building, which is shown as number 11 on this map. So, in summary, since 2010, new construction renovation has, in the Central Business District, has mostly consisted of residential and hotel projects. There have been 700 dwelling units proposed in the downtown, as well as 794 hotel rooms. However, at the same time, new development has been considerably under the height thresholds that are currently in place. In the traditional downtown core, which again has the maximum 145-feet height, the highest residential building has reached 62 feet maximum, and the highest hotel has reached 115 feet maximum. And that was for the Cambria project. Outside the core, which has a maximum height of 265 feet, the highest residential project has reached 71 feet, and hotel, the highest hotel project has reached 75 feet. In addition to the site plan review thresholds that are currently in place for the downtown, there are other strategies that the council may want to consider in terms of its authority to review projects in the Central Business District. One of those is through the conditional use permit process. Again, prior to the adoption of the Downtown Master Plan, most projects in the downtown were reviewed through this process. So, after the adoption of the Downtown Master Plan, the conditional use process was pretty much eliminated, except for a handful of some uses. One of the pros of the conditional use permit process is that council could apply it to a particular use or uses that it feels might be having a negative impact, or any type of impact, on the Central Business District. So, these are the uses that are generally compatible with the Central Business District, but that it might have some unique circumstances in terms of the type of use that it could be having or causing additional impacts. So, the conditional use permit process could be applied to, again, one particular use if council felt that there was a use that was causing an impact to the downtown. In addition, through the conditional use process, council could adopt additional standards for that use that would help bring it up to a level that would be either more compatible with other uses in the downtown, or that would better enhance the public health and safety. As a con, it would go through a quasi-judicial process, which basically, any evidence presented is presented at city council. And what happens is, and what happened prior to the adoption of the Downtown Master Plan, it was felt that when it goes through the quasi-judicial process, that because it's based on evidence at the city council meeting, that the lower boards and their recommendations don't carry as much weight. That basically, that the recommendations of those boards really isn't considered because council is really hearing about that project for the first time at council, at a council meeting, and that there's no ex parte communication permitted, meaning that council can't discuss the project at all with the applicant or amongst other council members. Another strategy that council may consider in terms of its development review authority is the conditional zoning process. Currently, Level 3 projects that are located in the traditional downtown core of the CBD are reviewed through the conditional zoning process. Areas outside the traditional core do not go through the conditional zoning process. They basically go through the standard technical review process for site plan review. And what conditional zoning allows is, it's basically a rezoning, in a sense, of a particular project. And there's flexibility in terms of the conditions that might be imposed and agreed to by the applicant. So, it's very project-specific in terms of the, again, the types of conditions that might be attached to a particular project. Some of the cons of the conditional zoning process are that it could lead to unpredictable outcomes, as well as unforeseen costs upon the applicant. An additional strategy that council may consider in its review authority for projects in the downtown would be adopting the design guidelines. So, currently, there are design standards that are codified in the city's UDO. But there's also another set of design guidelines that are reviewed by the Downtown Commission. Those design guidelines currently have mandatory review but not mandatory compliance. And what that does is, it allows some flexibility in terms of, you know, creative types of design in the downtown. The design guidelines offer options for several of the recommendations, so sort of a menu of different options that the applicant may consider for the design of the project. But again, it's, they're currently not mandatory compliance. One of the, or two of the cons that are, could result, as a result of adopting those design guidelines, would be driving up, again, development costs. If there are additional design guidelines that are codified, that could lead to a more expensive project in terms of maybe building materials, for example. And it could also inhibit design flexibility.
All right. Just to clarify on that point, you're saying we could adopt mandatory design guidelines?
Yes.
But, and we wouldn't need to designate it a historic district or somehow create, we would have the authority to do that just within the current zoning structure?
There are a couple of different strategies for the adoption of design guidelines, whether it's a local designation of a local historic district or conservation district. But there are other potential means through, just amending the text in the UDO, that could require that projects follow those design guidelines and therefore sort of adopt them by reference, in a sense.
Okay.
So, just to clarify on that, the two issues are separate. The historic district is one option, but then these guidelines that already exist are another option.
Correct.
And are these not mandatory because council hasn't adopted them? Or is that...
Correct. So, the current design guidelines that are not included in the UDO, they were approved by the Downtown Commission but not formally adopted by city council.
Now, we do have some design guidelines that are in the UDO, like the second-story setback and building to the sidewalk. And, you know, we, I mean, there are guidelines in there, but it doesn't get into the color of your paint or, you know, your tile preference or whatever the case may be. It's not at that level of detail.
This set of guidelines that we haven't adopted is much more detailed and specific than what exists right now. And the decision, the affirmative decision was made back at that point not to do that and just make it voluntary compliance?
Well, so, Gordon and Cecil and I came on in 2009, and some of this had already happened, and some of it was still left to be voted on. I don't think we were even on, I could be wrong.
Pre-existing, I think.
Yeah, that was set up. But, so, I'm not exactly sure what the thinking was, and you weren't the planning director, and you weren't the city attorney.
Is there anybody in the room?
But I can, I would say that a guideline is always exactly that, whether the council does it or whoever. If you want to integrate mandatory guidelines through the CUP or put them in the ordinance, you can do that as long as it's not one or two family dwellings. And then there's other ways you can integrate them into the comprehensive plan where they could be more considered than just voluntary. There's a lot of ways to bring those into it, which Todd and I have discussed.
Right. So, the legislators in this last session preempted us from design guidelines on one and two family dwellings, but that wouldn't apply to this.
What I'd be curious to know, and I doubt that you have the information right now, is how many of the plans that have gone to the Downtown Commission and been reviewed have not complied with, in words, they have mandatory review and voluntary compliance. I wonder how many have not complied?
I think, generally speaking, projects generally comply with the intent of many, if not... if not, you know, most of the design guidelines. However, there might be one or two guidelines that the project may not fully meet the intent, or it's a little bit more subjective than the codified standards that are in the UDO.
And the other problem is that it's reviewed at the Downtown Commission, and I don't think that, even though those are public meetings, I don't think the public is aware they're happening, and that they're, and understands that they're able to see the design and weigh in on the design. And what happens is, the commission sort of uses their opinion and their judgment about it, and sometimes we end up with something that is more controversial than that.
Yeah, my view would be that if the Aloft and the Indigo, for examples, and the new city center are compliant, then we need tighter rules.
Or elevate the level of review so that we, or both.
Yeah.
And I think certainly, if this was an option that council chooses to pursue, you know, I would recommend staff look at the current design guidelines, and they are written in such a way that they are flexible, there are options. So I think staff would have to evaluate the current guidelines to see, you know, what revisions might have to be made to bring them more in compliance with the whole UDO standards.
I do also wonder the, I know that council just adopted the new historic preservation plan that specifically does not recommend making downtown a local historic district or a state historic district, but my guess is that plan was months in its creation, and that the conversation we're having now about downtown development might not necessarily have been happening when that plan was got started. I just wonder if it's worth revisiting that particular question, because that seems to be a, I mean, let's just look at Baltimore Village, right? So that's, if you want things to look a particular way, that's a great tool.
And what I would offer is that the, we're not letting you finish your presentation, because we really are dying to talk about this, but what I would offer is, you'll finish up your presentation, and we'll talk about next steps in process, because I think, Julie, all those options will need to be vetted as we move through this process.
Definitely. And, you know, just to that point, too, and the, you know, it's definitely an option, and I didn't include it in this presentation, but it's similar to, you know, the, sort of just adopting design guidelines in general. And that's, and the historic, local historic district designation is just one of the mechanisms by which that could happen. And there's definitely considerations with all the different types of ways that, you know, design guidelines could be adopted. You know, with historic, with an historic designation, for example, it could help to sort of align the, you know, new projects with certain standards that council may wish, you know, that new projects adhere to. At the same time, you know, the downtown area in general, in terms of a design perspective, we do have a variation of different, you know, architectural styles, and there is a certain level of flexibility in terms of the creativity, in terms of the types of projects that we see in the downtown. That might be different than another area that has that local historic designation. To segue basically into the last portion of the presentation, I just wanted to briefly review some of the current strategies that the city has that help to preserve downtown character. There's a number of ways, either through our zoning, through different plans, or other economic programs that we currently attempt to preserve the character in the downtown. And I'll just review a couple of these. The Unified Development Ordinance, the mayor had mentioned this before, how they're, for new buildings, do have to have a minimum building height of two stories. There's requirements that require parking to be located either to the side or the rear of the building, if parking is provided. There are height limits in the historic core and design standards to ensure that new buildings don't completely overshadow, overshadow older buildings. There's also shadow impact requirements. Projects do have to submit sort of a shadow analysis to ensure that it satisfies that requirement. The council and city recently approved the establishment of a downtown coordinator position. This is a new position in the downtown, that that person, once they're hired, will be the liaison to the Downtown Commission, and will basically be the point of contact for all matters related to the downtown. City currently has, is working on a program, a grant called Startup in a Day. It was a $50,000 grant that was awarded a couple of months ago. That grant will help simplify the startup process for entrepreneurs, so that they can review through an online portal the necessary regulatory processes to start a business. There's also historic tax credits are another way to help preserve downtown character. Small business economic incentives at the city level. The city currently has a performance-based economic incentive program. This is a business development grant, grant to help stimulate small business expansions. Similar to the state's business tax credits, which are also offered, award of the city's grant is dependent on such factors as the location of the business, the amount of capital investments, and the number, equity, and quality of jobs created. There are also additional strategies that council may want to consider, such as additional local incentive programs. At a Downtown Commission meeting a couple of months ago, several downtown merchants submitted some potential strategies related to both local incentive programs that council or city may want to consider, as well as additional partnerships that could be undertaken. For example, these downtown merchants suggested supporting businesses that contribute to a sustainable, inclusive economic development, incentives to property owners who prioritize reasonable rent increases, or property owners who place deed restrictions or trusts. In terms of partnerships, downtown merchants suggested potential community investment and partnership with a nonprofit land trust, as well as partnering with organizations that can offer support in negotiating leases and protecting tenant rights. Now, with a lot of these recommendations, further analysis, I think, would have to be undertaken by staff to understand what the city's role would be with some of these recommendations, the cost to fund some of these initiatives as well, and the statutory, statutory authority of the city to implement some of these recommendations. And to give you an example, in terms of North Carolina statutes and the limits on zoning power within the city, you know, we can regulate the type of use, example, retail versus industrial uses. Zoning, we can regulate building size, height, and lot size through the bulk requirements of zoning. However, the city cannot regulate who owns the property or business. It's something that's not permitted by, you know, North Carolina statutes. So in summation, the downtown development review process, going back to that, and some considerations for council. If the, if council does want to recommend to staff to look at the current development review thresholds, we do recommend, you know, going through a public input process, similar to what was accomplished when the 2009 master plan was adopted. The alternative strategies to consider outside of changing the development review thresholds would be applying a conditional use permit process to a particular use that council might feel could be having an impact on the downtown, or expanding conditional zoning to outside the traditional downtown core, but still within the Central Business District. And finally, adopting downtown design guidelines, whether that's by reference in the UDO, or through a historic designation at the local level. In terms of preserving downtown character, the city is going to be kicking off the update to its comprehensive plan in the beginning of next year, and that will also include an extensive community engagement process. And that will be, you know, one way that the council and city as a whole might be able to strengthen some of its current policies that encourage downtown character and preserving character throughout the city. Another recommendation that was brought up at downtown, their Downtown Commission retreat a month ago, was potentially updating the downtown master plan in and of itself. This is something that has not been authorized by city council, but is another way that we might be able to look at current policies in the downtown master plan, and how those might be strengthened. And finally, I had talked a little bit about consideration of additional small business incentive programs and/or other partnerships. Again, this would require a further understanding of state restrictions, the city's role, and the potential funding requirements for those types of programs and initiatives. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Are there any questions?
I have several, but-
You have, go for it. This is the time.
So it seems to me we're talking about two issues, at least. One is concern about development downtown, the pace of it, the kind of it, the size of it, a whole, a whole set of concerns around development downtown. And then the second thing is, and it's not unrelated, but is sort of preserving the small business, local nature of downtown. And solutions to address those problems might be the same, or some, they might overlap, but they also could be completely different. And I have to say, I understand the second concern better, the small, local nature of downtown, a little bit more, I have, I'm clearer on that than I am on the former, and it feels to me like we can't, I at least can't figure out what of the many options you put up there make the most sense, until we have a better understanding, or again, I have a better understanding of, again, is it, is it the pace of development, is it the style of the development, is it the use, is it the height, is it the size, is it the, so, you know, if, when we talk about changing the level of review, I don't know, I don't know if that's going to fix the problem. So if, is adopting the design guidelines, is that going to fix the problem? So I'm wondering if we need a little bit, and I would, I'd welcome discussion and input from others up here, about what, I feel like we need to clearly identify the problems and concerns with the downtown development, because clearly there are some, you know, as a first step in figuring out the right strategy to tackle them.
Well, you know, what I would offer is that, you know, we are eternally limited as a city, as are all cities in North Carolina, to operate within the authority we have. So, you know, what you said is, there's a problem, and, you know, some people say there's a problem, some people say there's not a problem, but assuming there's a problem, which, which I think we've arrived at, the question of how do you truly and comprehensively address it, is an appropriate question, but we only have certain tools to use, period. So, so for me, I'm interested in, I know we've got, we're looking at the downtown master plan, it's being reviewed, because it's on schedule to be reviewed, and that is going to involve, could potentially result in an overhaul, or whatever that process will result in. We had asked, in a past couple of council meetings ago, that we accelerate the review of review levels. What are we, what are we reviewing, what are we not reviewing, and wanting to have a discussion about that. So I think that we're, I don't think we can solve that, what your question is, tonight. I think it's a really big question. And I, and what I, but what I would offer is that we get the ball rolling and have, get a process in place. So, so what I've heard tonight is, let's look at whether, look at whether we're, we need to bring Level 2s under the review of council, or somehow, and/or expand the area that covers downtown. We probably want to look at height issues again, and we probably want to look at imposing a mandatory design guidelines. Those are some of the things I'm hearing that might get at some of the problems that are occurring. And how do we do that? Well, I would recommend that we move this through Planning, Economic Development. Gwen's groaning at me, because this is like the third thing today. I said, hey, Gwen, because she's our new chair of Planning and Economic Development, to begin that discussion and be able to take a more thorough look at these, at these issues, and then decide there, you know, how's this going to work? Are we going to have public hearings and provide opportunity for everyone to be heard on this issue and see what the community wants? Are we going to hear, at that time, also from the community what these other concerns are, and have, you know, sort of an educational process? Here's what we can do, here's what we can't do, so within the toolbox of things we can do, what should we be doing? So, I mean, I would recommend that we start with PED to kind of really spend some time chewing on this and figuring out what we should do, and then, and then make some recommendations to move it, to move it forward. And knowing that we're anxious to, to move this along. And what I will just say is, you know, this is a very different city than when I moved here in 1988. It's changing very quickly, and what I'm hearing from the community is, there's concern about that, and how do we get a handle on it? Frankly, some of these projects you put up there, I didn't know about till you just put them up there. And that's because this process doesn't involve us reviewing Level 2s, and so you're seeing most things don't, don't even come to us. So if we're going to help represent a community that has concerns about this kind of growth, you know, the only way I know how to do that is bring it, bring it under our review. So, so I'm interested in getting that going, and I'm open to other suggestions about how we might do this. Yep.
Thanks, Mayor. The downtown master plan, the UDO, our budget, these are all values documents, and just as we go through a budget process every year, I'm really glad that we're going through our, reviewing our comprehensive plan, because the values of a community can shift over time. And as, and that's part of why we're having this conversation tonight. In 2010, when we were looking at downtown design review, we were in the depths of a recession, and we were trying to figure out, how are we going to stimulate investment and growth in our downtown? Well, here we are, it's five years later, and a lot of the stuff that's gone on, I think people have been supportive of, seeing the housing come downtown and seeing some of the other uses happening, but I think that the hotel and the tourism industry has been largely exploitative, and has not responded to the needs of the citizens. Is that me making the feedback?
Whoever's got the feedback problem.
Was he hearing it? That while the hotel industry has chosen to behave in an exploitative way, I think that that's part of the reason that you've seen the response that you have to the number of hoteliers who are coming in. The, among the values of the people of the city of Asheville are providing a living wage, is sourcing things locally, and turning to local businesses. It's recognizing that we are in the midst of an affordable housing crisis. It's cutting right through me.
Do we know what's, what's going on here with the-
You're hearing crickets? Is that what you-
I hear it, do you?
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much.
Yes.
Living wages, sourcing things locally, recognizing that we're in the depths of an affordable housing crisis, and we need everyone to be contributing to our housing trust fund, and also recognizing that last summer, when the occupancy tax debate was going on, that the citizens of the city felt that the hotel industry did not respond to what were very reasonable calls for cooperation and partnership. So there are some community values emerging, and we're getting to look at this development document in that light. So I'm very supportive of a broad public process around the comprehensive plan, so we can get good UDO revisions. And I would also say that as far as design guidelines, mandatory versus voluntary, I think that what we don't want is to sanitize, is to homogenize, is to disnify our downtown. That some of our community values are also around an independent spirit, and an arts and culture vibe to our downtown and to our city, and that we want an inclusive place that's not just a playground for tourists and for the wealthiest. So- So while we're looking at kind of whether we're going to do mandatory things, to recognize, that's a danger. When you start doing that, you can become Hilton Head. And I'm not interested in that.
You're talking about mandatory review.
Mandatory...
Oh, mandatory design guidelines, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So I'll be cautious around that. I'm open to it, but I will be cautious around it. I would be open tonight to just go ahead and saying, hey, let's move lodging as a use into a conditional use permit process. I would say, hospital, I was thinking lodging in particular, whatever, however we define it in the UDO.
As opposed to residential.
Oh, I'm sorry, as opposed to residential, that's right. The hotels versus apartments. And to expand that conditional zoning to include housing as well. I don't know if you could do the conditional zoning by use. I'll ask you that in a moment.
Take notes, you're going to do all this and...
And let's just make clear that what you're doing is instructing him to draft a tax amendment that come back up through the process.
Well, and you're providing...
Or voting change.
You're kind of providing your...
This is me. This is just me. And we'll see where everybody else is. I also, I don't want to chase off investors who want to come do great things downtown. If there's investors who want to come down here, who want to provide living wage jobs, who want to really join our community and to be a part of these broad community values we share, then let's embrace that, absolutely. We're not trying to chase folks off who are here to be really good members of our community. But we, I don't think that we as a body ought to stand for any exploitation of our citizens. So some of this is about striking a balance between homogenization and Wild West sort of feel. It's about making sure that we emphasize living wages, affordable housing, our local businesses. I would say, right now, I'm prepared to shift that development threshold down from that 175, at least to the 100 that we had it at before for now, while we go through a long process. Because if we leave it there during an extended process, I think that we're just leaving the barn door open. And then there's these five things that are in the report that I would also like to voice my support for, and I'm just going to read them. Supporting businesses that contribute to sustainable, inclusive economic development. Incentives to property owners who prioritize reasonable rent increases, or property owners who place deed restrictions or trusts. This is so folks don't get priced out of their buildings, so businesses can stay downtown. Partnering with organizations that can offer support in negotiating leases and protecting tenant rights. Partnering with organizations that can incubate small creative startups to foster and elevate the small business entrepreneur. And community investment in partnership with a nonprofit land trust. I think those are all really fantastic options, and I'm really glad to see them here. Thanks.
I'll make a couple of observations. One of the things I'm reminded about when we talk about downtown is that a few years ago, when we were first discussing whether we needed to limit busking, whether we needed to regularize it because it was getting so crowded, I learned that Charlotte was hiring buskers because no one would go downtown. They were actually hiring musicians to pretend they were busking, to try to generate crowds downtown. And it seems obvious to me from my time in Charlotte, it's because it's just not a nice place to be. And I think it's downtown, especially in the evening. Although I would love to see people come do great things in town, unfortunately, without any guidelines, we end up with developers who use the cheapest possible method, styrofoam and shoot-on cement, to create a building that they can tear down in 15 years when they priced it out or whatever. And we get, I agree, we don't want to homogenize Asheville, but we can have really amazing architectural buildings, like the Axona Building, which whether you like it or not, is a really interesting kind of building. The reflection of the Jackson Building, when you walk up Biltmore, is really an interesting site downtown. It's not the same thing to me and to my sensibility as the loft, which suddenly pulled their lighting on us at the last minute, saying it was part of their image. So some kind of guidelines. I don't know how you demand creativity, but I can understand wanting great things, wanting great architecture, but not the cheapest possible building without any rules. And so I would really like to see what's the way forward that some other cities have used for design guidelines that push for quality, not to have everything be an art deco building in Asheville, but not to, not to end up looking like Charlotte, or like other, every city USA. I would say that in my years here, I've been here since 1980, the thing I've heard most criticized in terms of architecture in Asheville is the BB&amp;T Building. It looks so out of place in Asheville. And hopefully, fortunately, that's going to change some now with redevelopment. But I think we've got to get our hands around that, because we are a tourist destination, whether we like it or not. And one of the things that people love about Asheville is the feeling of our town, a small town in the mountains. And if it starts to look like Charlotte in the mountains, they'll go find someplace else to be. And the real gem that we have inherited will be no more. So I really want to find some way that we can create guidelines that, and I would say mandatory. I mean, if we're going to have design rules, then the design need, the compliance needs to be mandatory, or it's a very empty sort of idea. That's all for right now.
Todd, my understanding is that there's something, some cities have kind of a very high-level architectural review, which is different from just compliance with design guidelines. I confess, I don't fully understand the difference between those two, but maybe one is about getting great design and having, still having some discretion and creativity. Maybe that's something we could, we could look at.
Certainly.
We've thrown a lot of ideas at you, and appreciate your indulgence. I've heard a lot of different ways to approach this, and I will say, in general, I'm concerned about going in the direction of CUPs for conditional use permits for downtown, because I think we can get where we want to get on CZs, conditional zoning, which would allow us to speak directly with the applicants and explain to them what we're looking for and enter into more of a negotiation setting. But I think, if I understand it, the downside of that is that we can't require CZs by use. It would be by size, and that would result in capturing hotels and apartments. It's a less, it's not a scalpel. Whereas the CUP, we could designate the use and just pull it out as something, you know, we want to see all hotels go through a CUP process, but not if it's residential building downtown. So I'm just concerned about the CUP process, but I just throw that out there because we're going to start this process at PED and try to look at the pros and cons of the different approaches and what we're trying to achieve. I mean, back to your, was the goal. So I, bottom line is, I think that this council needs to quickly look at bringing review of some kind under our jurisdiction.
This just sounds lovely. My only concern about this is like, okay, we've now asked PED to look at, look at a long list of options, and I feel like this is almost going to turn into the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. So I guess that's my concern. I mean, you haven't, frankly, we haven't really narrowed it down, I'm just saying. And we are going to have this big plan coming up. So I would prefer if council gave us two or three things that like to really hone in on, that we could make some, not quick, or, well, relatively rapid decisions on, while we're then going back and looking at the whole comprehensive plan.
Is there, is there more information we could get before it goes to PED, somehow to narrow, to focus a little more?
Well, perhaps this would, this may fall on its face, but we'll give it a shot. Just maybe nods or shows of hands, how many council members are interested in reducing the threshold for review at this body?
For downtown, you're talking about downtown.
Downtown. So to lower that 175,000 square foot threshold for review. I mean, that's something I'm interested in.
Yeah. So, and there's a couple of ways to do that. So you, that's, you all would want to look at, you know, do we just say, bring Level 2s in, or do we redefine Level 2, Level 3, and change it that way?
Another would be, is there broad...
Yes, Boy Scouts, feel free to quietly exit the room.
Thank you for being here, guys.
They're like, oh, God.
Just got exciting, we're raising hands.
I think there's a municipal government merit badge now, really.
Right. They have to have to see a certain amount of time.
Is there broad support for looking at expanding conditional zoning to incorporate more? You know, to move it outside of the CBD?
For instance, to include possibly hotels?
Well, so in order to do it outside the downtown, we would need to look at, are there additional uses that we want to bring under the CUP umbrella?
I was talking about CZ.
CZ.
I know, but...
I think what we need to look at with the CZs, if you want to do it that way, is we could talk about doing some sort of new district that could, it could get rezoned to, so that you couldn't do hotels by right. You couldn't do, the way it's written now is it's, if it's Level 3, it's a CZ, which is really not a district. It's sort of an interesting way to do it.
He's talking about outside the downtown. How do we, how do we, you're talking about regulating the application process for hotels outside the downtown, correct? Wasn't that what you were saying?
Sorry to interject, maybe this might help clarify. So the, in the Central Business District, it's further refined to a smaller boundary for the traditional downtown core, in the center part of the CBD. And that's where the CZ process is currently implemented. Outside of the traditional downtown core, but still within the CBD, projects go through a Level 3 process, but it's not currently through conditional zoning.
It's a CUP.
So you were talking about just outside the core.
Oh, so that's all CUP. If it's outside the traditional core, it comes as...
For Level 3, right?
Maybe it's Level 3, but not if it's Level 2. So the, so if we're talking about, for example, the South Slope area, we're outside the traditional downtown core, actually, yeah, this is...
Yeah, maybe you can put that map back up.
Yeah, that'll be... Sorry, thanks, Ellen. So the, again, the red boundary delineates the traditional downtown core, and that's where the Level 3 conditional zoning process applies. Outside of that red area, but still within the boundary of the Central Business District...
That's the green.
That's like most of the blue areas.
Oh, it's not the green.
It's the black and white.
The black and white line.
Oh, the black and white line, correct. That is an area that still require, you know, still has a Level 3 review. If a project reaches the size threshold, those projects are not reviewed through the conditional zoning process. But one of the options could be, that council may consider, would be to expand the conditional zoning review process from outside the traditional core and into the other areas.
Well, here's what I would offer. Instead of getting into the weeds on this, I was just trying to understand what you were trying to get at.
That's what I was trying to get at.
What?
Expand it outside the core.
To, so those, I guess for now, it's Level 3s, but in the future, to expand the conditional zoning options to where the black and white dotted line.
For, so, but in other words, they would all come to council for review.
Or just, I think, Gordon, what you're saying is that the standards, however they get revised within the core, would apply throughout the area encased in black and white.
Yeah, you know how I warned that this might fall on its face? Looks like we got the first one, but this second one is obviously more complicated. So it's not, it's not an easy yes or no tonight. So I'll just kind of withdraw that question for a moment.
But something to be explored, I mean, it's one...
Yeah. Yeah, I think the extent to which that a higher level of review happens in that bigger area, particularly as areas like the South Slope are developing, I mean, we don't, if we can prevent things from happening that we later look back at and say, ah, if only, then, you know, that would be good.
Yes.
Aside from the different levels, I'd be more interested in the intricacies of the conditional use permits, and how that works.
So, I mean, you know, one of the major differences between conditional use permit process versus a conditional zoning, with the CUP process, you could apply that to a specific use. So, for example, you could apply that just to hotels. If you decide to expand the conditional zoning process to, within all areas within the CBD, that would apply to all uses, residential, hotel, institutional uses. So that's one of the main differences.
I think the other thing that we had some conversation about was design. And looking, so Gwen, in terms of things that PED should consider would be either making those existing guidelines mandatory, looking at, I was looking at the historic preservation plan last night, and there are a number of recommendations about kind of preserving the core of downtown that are short of a local historic district. So just maybe exploring whether some of those, implementing some of those existing recommendations could help address these issues as well.
Okay, you guys.
Yeah. This kind of gets at my point about, like, what's the problem? I mean, I'm wondering if we can do a...
Well, so I am confused, and that is bad, because usually I'm not. So, and if I don't understand exactly what it is we're doing here, that's not okay. So I think the first thing we agreed to was the, looking at the Level 2 and Level 3 review and lowering the threshold for the review that comes to council. But what I'm concerned about is what you're telling me about the central core versus the area in the black and white dashed lines, and not, I thought what we were talking about as a council is making sure we look at that whole area for review.
Yeah.
Is that, okay, so that's, so however it's divided now, the nuanced differences, that any equivalent of a current Level 2 project, inside or outside the red line, looking at the idea of bringing that for review before council.
Okay.
So that's what I understood we were talking about. And you all can get into, is it appropriate to make them reviewed by city council as a CZ, or a CUP, or whatever, and I already said what I think about CUPs. And then we have the issue about design guidelines. I think that it would be helpful to look at a mandatory design guideline, I think it's duplicative there to say, redundant to say, mandatory, but to look at what that might be. Now, is it done as a historic overlay, or conservation, or is it just done a separate, you know, as some kind of design guidelines? You know, because what you're talking about may come with the implication that then things are also routed through HRC, through the Historic Resource Commission, and is that what we intended? So I don't know, but...
Or do we want an architectural review?
Right. Right. We want something different for downtown and have an architectural review committee that has experts on it. So, but I, do we hear consensus that we want to look at mandatory design guidelines for downtown? Are we, yes? Anybody, no?
Yeah.
Yes, everyone's a yes.
I mean, if...
I would want to know what that means.
Right, and that's what I'm just saying, because I hear your concern, and we, this is just to look at it. And then the final, the final question I had was, outside of the downtown, throughout the city as a whole, do we want to bring, under our review, hotel applications? And if you designate them as a CUP, or maybe, I don't know legally what all the different issues would be, but, you know, we hear a lot of concern about hotel growth in general, and as far as I know, all the hotels that we're seeing come up around the outer parts of Asheville, they're not coming to us at all. You know, the first time we hear about them is when we drive past them. So is that something that we're interested in looking at, or do we want to leave it with the downtown for right now?
Doesn't seem to be burning.
Well, I do think that, given the level of public interest in it, that it might be worth at least considering whether we should be reviewing all the hotels. And there's an awful lot of pushback about, and that's not to say we would stop them, but at least maybe they get on the public radar earlier.
I think that that's a good starting point.
I think the biggest complaint was downtown, and that's what most people object to, is the amount of hotels that have been built downtown. If it becomes a problem outside of town, we can address it later.
Well, or maybe we could address it, that it's not as much of a, as a rush, and we can put it on the agenda relative to the whole comprehensive plan, as opposed to...
That's a good idea. I like that.
I like that, Gwen, that's good.
You're offloading things from PED.
Yeah. All right, wait a second.
So, Gwen, I mean, Esther, just one on that mandatory design guidelines. I just, again, I think something like architectural view may be different. So, just this issue of design and whatever that...
Todd is...
You're on it.
Yeah, Annie's got a lot of experience with this in various different cities, but...
Absolutely.
Yeah, you're... I think Gwen's really excited to hear about all the different options for this.
I can't wait.
Right.
And just a statement in general, you know, the comprehensive plan will be a really great opportunity to look at the city as a whole, vision for the city 20, 30 years from now, you know, where do we anticipate, and how will we, you know, control growth management in the city? That's just going to be a great tool. It'll be a roughly 18-month-long process, and there'll be, you know, a lot of opportunities for public input.
Okay. And Gordon, I'm remembering, you mentioned the small business, small local business downtown issue.
Yes.
And you mentioned it in your presentation. I would hope that, as we're about to go on our annual retreat, January 29th and 30th, all of you are invited to attend. And I would hope and anticipate that in that retreat where we sort of talk 30,000-foot policies, focus, direction, that we would have an opportunity to incorporate the small business focus and the kind of menu of options for promoting and helping and supporting small businesses in our downtown. And we would be able to provide some policy direction at that time. That'd be one opportunity. I don't know. That's pretty soon, so...
It is. Yeah, I'll also say that there's an urgency, because it's happening right now. And I'm usually a huge fan of a patient process. But I think that we're, right now, with the pace of development that we're seeing downtown, that our small, local, independent businesses are in trouble. So, I'd like to just get to it as quickly as we can.
So, Todd, the information that you're going to be bringing back to PED, that will include some best practices possibly for municipalities and design guidelines on these types of issues?
Absolutely. I think, you know, with all this sort of options that I laid out, I would certainly, you know, would bring those back through the various committees and with some, you know, additional analysis sort of attached to that, so we have a better understanding of, you know, particularly when it comes to economic incentives and partnerships for small businesses, you know, what would the city's role be with some of those types of policies and the types of costs that might be associated, for example. So, those are some of the things that I would recommend that we would have to further analyze at a staff level.
Okay. Esther, can I do one more thing before Todd leaves? Sorry.
It's only 6:15.
I just showed up, I'm already throwing wrenches. So, to the point, to Gordon's point about things are happening now, I'm sure many of us saw the article in the paper earlier this week about expanding development on Long Shoals Road and big new commercial and residential developments on Long Shoals Road. And we have in the city some key corridors that are ripe for redevelopment. And I'm wondering if we could, to the point of, I'm also a big fan of thoughtful processes, but because we're so hot right now, looking at some of those corridors, and I'm thinking about the really big parcels like Kmart Shopping Center and Innsbruck Mall, and some of those places that in, under the right set of, under the right zoning and the right, in the hands of the right developer could be amazing places, or they could just end up being the same old strip shopping center redone. So, I'm wondering if there is a way to maybe accelerate looking at the zoning of some of those kinds of parcels that, again, present a lot of opportunity, that we might want to act on a little bit more quickly than some others.
Yeah, I think when it comes to corridors, we generally do try to look at a segment of a corridor, not, I mean, there could be these, you know, parcels that have a high development potential and redevelopment potential, but we would look at just, you know, a number of parcels within a certain segment, you know, of that corridor. You know, the comprehensive plan, I think, you know, is one, you know, tool that, where we could evaluate those corridors, and I would anticipate that that would definitely, you know, occur under that process. In the meantime, you know, staff has been looking at some other corridors as part of our innovation districts that we have designated throughout the city. Billmore Avenue has been another corridor that staff has been, you know, analyzing over the last couple of months and the types of redevelopment opportunities there. But, you know, I would just caution that, you know, the comprehensive plan process might be the best sort of method or approach to really looking at a corridor for an entire segment. And there's a whole bunch of different tools, zoning tools, that could be applied to those. An overlay district, for example, could be applied to some corridors to raise the level of design review and guidelines and really help to create some, you know, really great projects on some of those specific parcels that you mentioned.
Anyone else? Okay, that was one of our more involved presentations, but that was really good. Thank you very much.
I promise my staff report next time will be a lot shorter, but hopefully, it's some good context.
Well, that's a big one. Yeah, that's a good one.
Now, just go fix it, okay?
Yeah. We're back in two weeks.
Thank you.
Okay, we have reached the public hearings portion of our agenda. The first is a public hearing to consider an amendment to a previously approved conditional zoning at 671 Sand Hill Road to add a 2-story, 8,000-square-foot building for an established private school. And Ellen Kleins is here to make this presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, members of city council, members of the public. The operators of the New Classical Academy are seeking your approval to expand their school, which is located at 671 Sand Hill Road. This is Exhibit A map, property located there. Surrounding zoning in this area includes RM 8, conditional zone for 46 residential units at the back of the site. This is institutional zoning for Asheville School. There's just a variety of single-family and other type uses in the RM 6 district across the street. There's an aerial here including in that, so it's mostly undeveloped, further west. These are all kind of small-scale developments, for the most part. Two separate apartment projects at the rear of the site, sharing a driveway coming off of Sand Hill Road. This is an existing conditions plan, and I'm going to see... Sand Hill Road is at the south of the site. This is the shared driveway here. What's on the plan right now represents existing conditions since the 2012 conditional zoning. The place of worship here was converted into school use, and so that is basically the condition on the property today. We have buffer around the north and the west side. Part of that condition in 2012 was to waive a buffer located here because of lack of space with that existing drive. That condition would continue should this be approved going forward. The plan, though, is to build a new structure, and this would be about 8,000 square feet, two stories. Four classrooms and a multipurpose space on the two levels is proposed. That would complement the existing building, which is 3,400 square feet, which is also two levels. The site is sloping, so they're able to make use of the site conditions. This is representing the proposed new structure here and this existing building again. And there is just some minor changes to the operation of the site, bringing that building forward, and the front lawn area basically is what's out there today. Here are some elevations of the proposed structure. This is sort of a rounded edge on each side, simple roof form, the two levels depending on location on the site, and some ports of it, points of it, it'll be a one-story building, a parent one-story building. This is the south end facing Sand Hill Road in this location. The Planning and Zoning Commission did review this project along with the Technical Review Committee. Minor items were noted in the Technical Review Committee report, which can be met by the applicant. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval. At that review, there was a neighbor who came to discuss, I believe she's the owner of the apartments at the rear. She wanted to discuss parents dropping off and picking up the schoolchildren. Turns out that most of the concerns were about the public school kids coming in off the school bus and the folks waiting in the driveway there. So, as a part of this approval, staff requested and made, it was a condition from the 2012 review, is that when we approached or reached 60 students, they're at 56 now, we would do a traffic, sort of analysis or study, and the traffic engineer reviewed that and felt that the program they have in place, which is staggered pickup and drop-off times over a period of time, works, and that the, with the site plan that we're working with here, it's sufficient. So, there's a number of conditions that we've prepared and we have submitted with this report. The applicant has reviewed them as well. And so, that concludes my presentation. I can answer any questions if you have any for me.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you. All right, at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing?
Applicant.
Oh, I'm sorry. We don't want to... Is there a representative of the applicant who would like to speak? Thank you.
Well, he's coming up. I want to, as someone who's spent a lot of time sitting out there, I just want to remind all of us to actually use our microphones, because it can be really hard to hear when you're out there.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. My name is Clay Mooney. I'm a landscape architect with Design Associates here in town, and I'm here to represent the developer, the academy on this project. We feel this is a fairly straightforward project. As Ellen mentioned in his presentation, this is a previously approved CZ project back in 2012, and we will continue to meet all the requirements. We have no issues with the conditions that's set forth in the previous TRC and planning and zoning. If there are any questions you might have, I'll be happy to answer them. The head of the school happens to be here, as well as the architect, so we're here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, now, I will open the public hearing on this item. If there's anyone wishing to comment on this item, now is the time. Each speaker can have three minutes to speak. I will close the public hearing on this item. Do I have questions, comments, or a motion?
I move to approve the institutional conditional zoning amendment based on site plan and find that the request is reasonable, is in public interest, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans in the following ways. One, appropriately scaled non-residential uses that serve residents of neighborhoods are encouraged where impacts can be managed. And two, the proposal will bring further investment at an infill location and will improve public infrastructure.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. The second item and last item on our public hearings agenda is a public hearing to consider the permanent closing of an unnamed alley off Jarrett Street. And Chad Bandy is here to make the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Manheimer, members of council. As you said, my name's Chad Bandy, Streets Manager, Public Works Department. This evening, I'm bringing before you a request to permanently close the right-of-way that is shown on the map above, which is off Jarrett Street, off the end of Jarrett Street. This request was originally brought, initiated by TS Investments LLC, and then along with the petition that was brought forth, the adjoining, all adjoining property owners have signed an affidavit in support of the closure. The request for this closure was brought in front of city departments and the local utility companies on October 14th, at which time we received no objections or requests for retaining the right-of-way. It was then presented to the Multimodal Commission on October 28th. At that time, it was approved with no objection. On November 10th, it came before city council and the, a resolution of intent to permanently close was passed at that time. And tonight, I would, I come in front of you seeking a resolution to permanently close this right-of-way, and I would be more than happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Any questions?
This just occurred to me, and I could be off-base. When we were considering the Falkenhurst neighborhood proposed development there, there was some talk of the public access to the nature preserve was, there was the talk of being able to extend that out in a Greenway style out from that property, and I believe this was one section of what could have possibly been a connecting Greenway. Was that brought up or discussed in the process?
Yeah, that was not brought up during this process. I'm not exactly familiar with that. One thing that, from looking at this, that may hurt that, it's hard to tell on this map, that this right-of-way is surrounded on all sides by private property, so there's no connection to any other public right-of-way except for Jarrett.
Understood.
All right, any other questions? Do we want, do we need to hear from the applicant? This is an opportunity, if you have, you don't, it's not a requirement.
I just say thank you for your consideration. I'm managing partner, Kathy Durham, with managing partner with TS Investments. Thank you for consideration in this proposal.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing on this item. If there's anyone wishing to comment, please let me know. I'm going to close the public hearing on this item. Do I have a motion?
I move to permanently close the unnamed alley off Jarrett Street represented in the map there. You need more of a legal description?
No.
Okay.
Second, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. All right, we have an item under unfinished business, the I-26 Connector Project, and we have staff member Ken Putnam, who's here to talk to us about this. And in terms of the process, we contemplated that staff would have, so here's where we are. We're in the I-26 proposal process, and the North Carolina Department of Transportation has a deadline for comments on the proposal, and this is the only council meeting we have before those comments are due. And staff has some comments they have compiled that are, I don't know, would you say, more technical in nature, but not, but somewhat, some non-so-technical. And then, the council also has some comments. So, Ken, please do a better job than I just did of explaining what we're doing.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name is Ken Putnam. I'm the Transportation Department Director. And the I-26 Connector Project is a project that, when it's finished, it will become a part of the I-26 interstate system that runs from Kingsport, Tennessee to Charleston, South Carolina. The project is seven miles long, and it begins in our area at I-40, and it ends at, along US 1923, right below the Broadway interchange. It's divided into three sections, and in your packet of information, you have an overview map of that, and the sections are identified as Sections A, B, and C. The draft environmental impact statement was released on October 16th, 2015, and the NCDOT had the official open house and public meeting on November 16th, 2015, and as the mayor's already mentioned, the comments are due December 16th, 2015. Couple of things that the staff has been working on throughout this entire process, and by the way, this 60-day period has flown by very quickly, and we've had a lot of work to do, but our public media office has worked very closely with the NCDOT to be sure that any and all comments that came in from our public citizens would get into their hands, into DOT's hands. And we also would encourage folks through media blasts and so forth on the best way that they could... that they could send their comments in directly if they chose to. DOT on November 16th did a very good job as far as making all these avenues available to the public. During that day, there were three basic sessions. There was a local officials meeting that was held around noon that invited officials to come in and sit down and listen to part of the presentation that was going to be done, what was going to happen during that day, and then staff took questions. And then after that official time, those same officials could meet face-to-face with a whole host of DOT staff that they had, so they could interact one-on-one with them. And then around 4:00 or 4:30, there was a open house session where members of the public could come in and do the same thing. And even if you wanted to zero in on a specific piece of property, the DOT was prepared to even make a copy of that section of the map for you after they answered their questions. And then the official public meeting was started at 7:00, and I believe it ran for two to three hours, and there were a lot of comments taken. And the key to all this, all the comments are recorded, all the all the written comments are taken in place. The other avenue that the DOT has done is on their website, all of the information that's been presented and shared is available to be looked at even even now today. What what staff did internally, we held two long work sessions on two different days where we got input from all of the different departments in the city, and we put those together. And again, all this information is is in your packets. All of our information has been reviewed and tweaked by the Multimodal Transportation Commission. They did that at their meeting on last week on December the 2nd. The comments that staff has is divided really into three or four different sections. We have a section called general comments, and then a Section A comments, Section B, and Section C. Now, I just want to show share a couple of slides, just kind of highlighting some of those major comments and some of the emphasis that we're trying to do. And I use the pair of words strongly encourages, and I use that throughout those comments. And I was repetitive, but I did that by design to really send a strong message to the DOT. But one of the main things that we're trying to encourage the DOT to do is to include complete streets elements. You have approved a complete streets policy in June of 2012. The DOT approved a similar policy in 2009 and created a how-to manual for that policy in 2012. And we're just trying to make use of both of those documents throughout this entire process. We're also strongly encouraging the DOT to minimize the overall project footprint. We're strongly encouraging the DOT that we, the city, want active participation during the design phase. We're strongly encouraging that the DOT provides mitigation strategies during the construction phase. This would include even possibly possibly funding certain things to help mitigate negative aspects to our transit routing, or pedestrians, or bicycle movement during the construction phases. And then we're strongly encouraging the DOT to redesign Amboy Road to be consistent with the project that we are now designing ourselves. And we call it the Radtip Project, but we're talking about the section, the southern section, which is half of our overall project, runs from Amboy Road up to Lyman Street, I mean, excuse me, up to Twelve Bones. And that section, we have a two-lane of travel. We have a protected two-way cycle track. We have a greenway path, and we have sidewalks. And we think it's important for the DOT, because we think we're going to be having ours under construction first, we think it's important when the DOT expands Amboy Road, Amboy Road and Meadow Road into Biltmore, and also back towards Brevard Road, that we have a consistent footprint so that we can have the best use of that protected two-way cycle track. Next steps, of course, City Council action is not needed for our comments, but we're trying to share them with you to let you know what we've done. We will submit those comments via a cover letter on December 16th. But now I'll segue into the next portion where Councilwoman Mayfield will present the resolution that action is needed on, and I'll be available for any questions.
Great, thanks. And before you go away, I just want to say thanks in front of everyone to you and your staff and the planning staff. I know you have put a tremendous amount of work into this letter, and we really appreciate it. It's it's great. I think it sends the right, says all the right things to DOT, so thanks. Since you finalized that and the agenda went out, I've heard from a couple of people who have had who have suggestions to add to that letter. So should I just mention those now?
I think it'd be good to mention them so that the public can hear it, but I would appreciate an email.
Sure. I will do that. So one is adding a bullet about the impacts of the fours, as I'll say, four and four B on the east side of the river, and particularly in the Hill Street area, Isaac Dixon and Riverside Cemetery. I think there are opportunities there for that footprint, again, to be shrunk a little bit, but just expressing concern about that because we don't talk, the letter doesn't talk about that now. Second thing is making Patton Avenue, again, in the fours, making Patton Avenue a pedestrian-friendly, truly multimodal urban boulevard instead of just a high-speed throughway to downtown. And that a lot of that is is design issues that will rest with DOT, so we just want to flag that, that that's really what we're trying to get to in those alternatives. Third would be, I'm not sure if we include anything, or if you include anything in the letter about the the currency of the maps, but I've heard some people express concern that the maps that DOT is using, the base maps, are not, they're maybe from 2010. And if anybody's been paying attention, we've kind of had a lot of development since 2010. So just flagging for them the need to really check, check on new maps. I don't know if that's something that our planning department can provide for them, you know, houses and residences and businesses that have been built in that in this corridor in the last five years, something like that. And then an issue we all have at our place, an email that came in today, this idea of building on top of the Haywood Road Bridge, actually including structures on the Haywood Road Bridge to sort of create a continuous corridor on Haywood Road in West Asheville. And again, maybe just flagging that as an issue for for further discussion and exploration.
That that sounds good. In fact, on the last one that you raised, I've already started an initial conversation with the local DOT office about that.
Great, great. Before I move into the resolution, does anybody have questions for Ken?
Yeah, I have one question, and that is, isn't it true that although the state approved the complete streets plan in 2009, that since then, they've banned the use of state money to build bike lanes?
I know, I know. Well, I know that that bill, or a bill similar to that, was raised the last session, and I don't know how it landed. There was, there was part of that bill that would require that any type of bicycle lane that would be put onto a state facility would require a supermajority from the Board of Transportation. But I don't think that aspect of it was approved, but.
It was not.
Oh, good. Then, thank you.
Okay, all right. So should I dive into the resolution? Great. So both for people who are here and people watching from home, even though this has been a topic of conversation for many, many years, I just want to take a second and remind us all why this is important and why we need to really take our time with this. So from my perspective, this is probably going to be the largest infrastructure project we are ever going to see in western North Carolina. It is potentially three-quarters of a billion dollars, and that's just in this corridor in the city. So hugely impactful to neighborhoods and businesses that in our in our city, all of which are growing. So it it this will really dictate how this project develops and unfolds and is built, will dictate the character and the feel of our city literally for decades going forward. And and now is the time really to get it right. So this project has the impact, has the potential to impact, you know, bustling West Asheville that's just exploding as a pedestrian corridor, historic Burton Street, development along the river on the east side, again, that is just exploding. We're seeing lots of great development down there. It has the potential to impact historic Monford, and then also Emma. Those are the main neighborhoods that stand to be impacted by this project. And the the real question, I think in my mind and the minds of the people that I've talked to, is what is the purpose of this project? Is it to benefit the people who live here and the people who who come to visit Asheville? Or is it really to benefit people who are just going through Asheville? Everyone I've talked to is interested in having this project benefit the people who live here and the people who come visit us rather than the people who are going from South Carolina to Tennessee. And this is really the fundamental division and difference between the DOT and the city and the people who the people who do live here and are interested in this project. And it's really the, it's the crux of the differences and really, you know, underlines why we continue to have all of these discussions about this project because we just, I think it's just important for everybody to understand that there are just a different set of goals here. But again, as with so many things in our city right now, it is absolutely critical that we get this right. We have to get this right. Before diving into the text of the resolution, I want to just set the stage a little bit on the history, and that will help provide a context for for the resolution that we're proposing. And this will not take long, but so the project, I think, as most people know, was first proposed in the 1980s. We first saw designs from DOT in the mid to late 90s. And in response to that, the city formed what was called the Community Coordinating Committee. And that committee was actually chaired, co-chaired by former Mayor Lou Bissett, kind of representing the business community, and then then Western North Carolina Alliance Executive Director Brownie Newman. So it was a real marriage of the business community and the the environmental community, had lots of broad citizen involvement. And that effort came out with a set of design guidelines that the city adopted, and I believe the Metropolitan Planning Organization also adopted, and sent to DOT and said, this, these are the the things that we would like this project to accomplish in our city. And some of those included matching the scale of the project to the character of our community, reunification and connectivity of community, minimization of neighborhood and local business impacts. And then another really key goal was the separation of local and interstate traffic on Patton Avenue. And that what that would do is allow Patton Avenue to turn back into a surface street. It would theoretically allow the city to reclaim land along Patton Avenue for urban development and turn Patton Avenue into back into really a gateway to downtown. So all of those were were interests that the city was advancing back as early as 2000. So in the mid 2000s, DOT, to their credit, heard that, a lot of that, and came back with a new alternative, Alternative Four is what they added in response to that. In 2008, they DOT issued the first draft environmental impact statement. But even they admitted at that point that it was incomplete. It was not a full document, and they were going to have to go back and and add to it. In two, a year later, in 2009, DOT agreed to add Alternative Four-B to the environmental impact statement. Many of you will remember that Four-B is the alternative that was produced by the Asheville Design Center. In fact, the Asheville Design Center was created to to produce that alternative. Very, very, very impressive work. And I just want to pause here, and, you know, Asheville's on the map for lots of things, but there, I'm not sure that there is a community anywhere in the country that has gotten DOT to include a citizen-generated alternative in an environmental impact statement. So kudos to the ADC and to this community for making that happen. We jumped from 2009 to 2014. The project kind of fell down to the bottom of the list in terms of funding and priority in that period of time. Last year, DOT came back with yet again revised drawings and yet another alternative that they had created, Alternative Three-C. And then this year, of course, they issue the a second draft, a new draft environmental impact statement, and we just had the public hearing. So what I hear a lot of people say is, you know, we've been talking about this forever. We just need to get it done. And and my response to that is, yes, we have been talking about it forever, but only only now have we seen a document that documents the full range of impacts from this project. And many people who actually are going through it will say it is not complete and still needs a lot of work. But but up until now, we have not seen anything that tells us the full range of impacts on our community. So if if we had made this decision in the past, we would have made it without fully understanding the impacts on our community. So I just think that's really important. So where are we today? As as Ken and the mayor said, there's a draft environmental impact statement. DOT is accepting public comment, so now is the time for the city to weigh in and and offer its opinion on this. Now, again, in the many conversations I've had, there is a very strong sentiment among some folks that this project is just, this project just needs to go away. It's terrible. It would be terrible for the city, and it just needs to go away. And and I would, I would just, while that is a very understandable sentiment, I think the city should resist that temptation for for several reasons. The first is that there are very real safety issues in this corridor, and we just have to remember that. Anybody who's driven across the bridge knows that and understands that. So we we have, there are real problems that we have to solve. So that's the first one. The second one is, even if there were consensus to take that position, the city of Asheville standing up and saying, DOT, we don't like this project, doesn't necessarily stop it from moving forward. So it could be, you know, a statement with absolutely no meaning. And then third, we would actually forfeit a critical opportunity to make the city's voice heard yet again about what it is that we want to see from this project. So regardless of how any of us feel about this project, in our heart and in our gut, we have an obligation at this point as a city to weigh in and tell DOT, as I said, once again, what we want to see in this project. So what do we want to see? It's actually not that much different than what we wanted to see back in 2000. So we want to see, you know, a project that matches the scale and the character of our community, that reunifies and connects community, minimizes impacts to neighborhoods and local businesses, and separates local and interstate traffic. So the resolution that we have drafted accomplishes those things. It does really five specific things. So it calls on DOT to continue to work to minimize the footprint. That sentiment is throughout the letter that Ken has written. It is also critically important, so it is in the resolution as well. The second thing it does is it calls on DOT to analyze an option of fewer lanes in West Asheville and actually throughout the corridor of the project, and then to, in fact, build as few lanes as possible. And and DOT has.
We're getting visual age here.
Oh, great.
Oh, come on.
While that's coming up, I will say DOT has in fact, oh, great, thank you, has in fact agreed that if, so, you know, one of the points of consternation right now is that there is only one alternative considered for Section A, which is the section through West Asheville, an eight-to-10 lane section. DOT is, as we speak, at the city's request, analyzing an additional six-lane alternative and has pledged that.
You can't look at that.
Is everybody still sitting up in their chairs as opposed to dizzy on the floor? All right, so DOT is looking at a six-lane alternative, and of course, they have said on numerous occasions that if fewer lanes can be built, then that's what they'll build. So we just need to make sure that the analysis is done correctly to 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 get to the right conclusion there. The third thing this does is, and that's this point that showed up right there, is, as Ken mentioned earlier, it calls on DOT to create a collaborative working group with the city so that we can be working hand-in-hand with DOT on the more detailed design of this project moving forward. And that is going to help us shrink the footprint. It's going to help us address the travel demand model, the capacity analysis. To we just, we basically want to be sitting next to DOT the entire way forward from here on out. And again, in my, in a recent conversation with the project manager for DOT, he welcomed that and said that they did not think that would be a problem. Fourth thing it does, the resolution does, is it endorses Alternative F-1 for Section C. Section C is the I-26, I-40, I-26 interchange out in West Asheville. Alternative F-1 is the smallest of the of the options there. It is the least expensive, has the least impact. That said, it is still enormously impactful, and the city's letter actually calls into question whether all of the, all of that needs to happen. And then the final thing that the resolution does is it endorses Alternatives Four and Four-B over Alternatives Three and Three-C for the bridge section, so the section across the river. And that is for, it's for a whole host of reasons, but the bottom line is that those alternatives provide a better framework for meeting city goals and and moving forward with. city priorities. They, both of those alternatives still need a lot of work and still need a lot of refinement, but again, they are the best starting point for what we have. So I think it's probably clear that the city has been really consistent throughout the history of this project and its concerns that it has expressed to DOT. I think the "we" today, as the people sitting up here now, sort of, it's our job to carry that message forward to DOT and continue to tell them what we think is important. And I hope that this resolution really reflects where we are. I also just want to say, I think our relationship with DOT has evolved and changed over the last few years. You may remember that Mark Hunt and Jan Davis served on an informal working group that worked over the last three years with county representatives and others. And that group worked pretty closely with DOT on a number of things. And we did make progress. We improved the dialogue, improved the relationship, and I'm just more hopeful than ever that we can, we can actually move this down the road. But we, you know, again, it comes back to this crux. We have, we have very real problems in this corridor that need to be addressed, and we need to figure out a way to do that while preserving the integrity of our city and the things that make it special. And I know, I can speak for myself, that I will pledge myself to that task, and I know from conversations with the other folks up here that everybody is willing to do that as well. So with that, I'm happy to take questions. I also have just a couple of amendments that I want to make, suggest to this while they're up there. So just take your guidance on what to do next.
Do you, are those the WABA?
There are a couple, one of them is, yeah, yes and no. There are some others. Should we just walk through them quick?
Yeah. Why don't we go ahead and do that, and then...
All right. So the first change is on the front page of the resolution. This was a change, actually, that DOT requested that is not, is substantive but is fine. And that is in the, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8th whereas clause, to change the language to say, "Whereas NC DOT is committed to run the new local travel demand model and undertake a capacity analysis that considers a six-lane alternative for Section A, and has stated that," and this is the change, "fewer lanes would be built if these analyses demonstrate fewer lanes would be sufficient."
And those changes are in the draft?
They're in the draft that are on our, that are on our, yeah, at our place. So that's one. The second is over on the second page in number four.
On the forehead.
Right. So what we've done here on number four is just add reference to the Burton Street community. This was a change that Keith suggested, and I think it's great, in addition to expressing concern about the specific impacts on Emma and Montford in those alternatives. And then the last change I want to suggest is one that did come in this afternoon from WABA, and that would be to add to Point 3E, to add the word "and businesses" on the end of neighborhoods. So that would be, "Identify opportunities for repair and, to repair and address impacts of previous transportation projects on neighborhoods and businesses."
And I know WABA or the West Asheville Business Association also asked if a new letter could be created there under 3 to include, "evaluate possible opportunities for above-highway development to maintain the connectivity of Haywood Road as the main business corridor through West Asheville."
And that's the thing that I suggested, is a more technical comment that might be better for the letter.
Okay. And Ken, you're nodding. Would, are you agreeing to put that piece in your, in the staff letter?
Yes.
Okay. And then the other one?
Right. So the other point that the West Asheville Business Association raised was that the, in terms of the collaborative group that the resolution creates, that it be specific, a little specific about who might be on there, specifically representatives from the highly impacted neighborhoods and business corridors. And I'd like to suggest to this group that we, that we not get that specific, that we, partly because if we, if we make sure to add somebody from affected neighborhoods, that group could very easily get very big. And I think the way that we have talked about this is that it needs to be, it would best be a very technical group that could really focus on design and modeling issues. And so to just leave this general about who would be on that collaborative, on that collaborative group from the city, but then I do also want to suggest, as a substitute or as a way to address this concern, that I think what this is getting at is making sure that that collaborative group is, is in communication with and representing and advancing the interests of our neighborhoods and businesses. And so I think one way to do that, a different way to do that, would be for us to schedule regular updates here at city council meetings about the work of this and the progress of this collaborative group, whether that would be once a month, every other month, once a quarter. I don't have a sense of how quickly this process is going to move with DOT, but something, a way to create a regular feedback loop between the city and the people from the city who are on that collaborative working group and the communities. So...
Any other recommended edits that we need to talk about right now? Or go ahead and... I'm thinking about the process here. Normally what we do is we entertain a motion to adopt this, and then we open up the floor for comments, but there's not actually a rule about that, as far as I know. So we can, we can ask for people to speak on it before we have a motion. Treat it more like a public hearing, although technically it's not. Is that all right, if we do it that way, Rev.? Okay. So I have some people that filled out these forms to speak at our public comment period, which is at the end of the meeting, but some people said they want to talk about I-26, so I assume now you would like to, you would make your comments now. So I'm going to call the ones that signed up first, and then, and then we'll do a raise your hand if anyone else wants to speak. So the first person on here is John Gordon. And during this part, you will have three minutes to speak and watch the lights on the podium lectern, and it will tell you when...
Trying to zoom this thing.
Maggie will assist you right there.
Ms. Mayor, City Council. Thank you for taking a moment to listen to me. I'm John Gordon. I live in the Montford area.
Okay. Now, I'm going to move you over to this microphone, so if you...
Yes. You can hear me now? Thank you. I have concerns that neither the City Council nor the NIC DOT has thought far enough outside the box. And I'm suggesting that...
You know, you might, I wonder if you could prop that up right here in front so that we can see it, and then maybe the camera will capture it, or bring it in front of, bring it, I... Bring it, yeah, bring it, yeah, down here. There you go. Or right here. Yep, there we go. Okay.
What I'd like to suggest is that traditionally interstate highways don't intersect cities. This one is designed to intersect the city. Whereas if you look at the broader scale map, which is in small scale in front of you, you see that Interstate 26 down below I-40 and Interstate 26 up here above Broadway, above UNCA, can be connected very easily, it would seem to me, without all of this business and all these variations of ways to impact our community with sound, with noise and clutter and dismemberment of the community. And that is by going directly from the I-26, I-40 intersection around the city and up, reconnecting with the green section. The green is obviously the existing I-26. And I'm suggesting that it can be done from that intersection with I-40 as one alternative. And the other is to reroute I-26 briefly on I-40 West to a new location that circumvents the city even further, as you can see here. I commend that. If I can strongly encourage, I would like to do that, to ask the city council to encourage, to strongly encourage the North Carolina Department of Transportation to consider an entirely alternate route. Thank you.
Can I just speak to that really quickly? Because this is a, this history was so long ago that most, many of us don't remember it, but there was back in the late 80s, early 90s, this very fight.
Really?
And our forefathers and our city's business leaders demanded that it come through the city.
Well...
So that is, that is how we have ended up where we are. And there are many people, including the late and wonderful Senator Martin Esbit, who thought that was the wrong decision until the day he died. But it is sort of where we are.
In light of the current consternation, is it worth revisiting?
I'm only thinking about the, you know, ironically immovable DOT. And I, you know, while we might all be able to agree on that, I don't know what the odds are that the DOT is willing to consider something.
I understand.
But I...
11th hour. And I'm an 11th hour resident. We moved here five years ago, so I'm not familiar with the precedence.
They wouldn't get you hired with the DOT.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm happy to leave this.
Yes, if you would leave it with Maggie. And for that matter, I guess what I would say is anybody who speaks here tonight who has written comments that they're able to leave with us, I mean, I'd be glad to pass those on to the DOT just to facilitate the citizen input process. Anyone can provide comments.
Mayor, may I make a process point as well?
Yes.
As people come forward, if there are questions, I think it'd be helpful if we can reserve those and respond to them all at once, just to make sure that we can get to hear everybody.
I'm flipping through home stays, which we're going to save for the end of council, and St. Lawrence Green. Todd Figura, Figura.
Ted.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ted. And you know, you wrote that clearly. I just, I didn't, I'm sorry.
Thank you. And I would, I believe I have three people here who will...
Yield their time to you?
Yes.
Okay. Three people who are not going to speak on this issue and yielding their time. I got 1, 2, 3. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
And then it's, yes.
Thank you. I thank the Ms. Mayor, City Council members, staff for providing this opportunity. My name is Ted Figur. I live at 118 Logan Avenue in Asheville, North Carolina, and I am representing the East-West Asheville Neighborhood Association, Iwana. This is an association. We have, we have 202 active members, that is, members on our email list, but the neighborhood has about 2,500 households and businesses in it. In September, in response to the French Broad River MPO release of the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, the 30-year plan and the comment period, Iwana conducted a survey of its members, and the results of this survey here are highly relevant to the topic at hand. We had, the survey was only out for a brief period, about a week, about a few days before the end of the survey, WLOS featured it, and so it got pushed out further. We had 316 responses. Of those responses, 111 were from East-West Asheville. That's a 55% response rate from our, from our email list, which, if anybody knows, surveys is incredible. 176 responses were from West Asheville generally, and 205 responses were from areas affected by, directly affected by the proposed I-26 connector. The, I just want to go through a few of the, of the highly relevant questions and survey responses. We asked, "I-240, I-26 is planned to be widened to six or eight lanes from I-40 to the Bowlin Bridge. Homes and businesses in West Asheville, including East-West Asheville, would be purchased and demolished for additional right-of-way. I and the choices were support this widening." Only 25% of respondents supported widening to eight lanes, and among Iwana respondents, that was less than 12%. Support widening to six lanes but not eight, 39% of respondents supported this, and oppose this widening completely, almost 45% of respondents. So that's almost 45% opposing an eight-lane widening of Section A, and among East-West Asheville respondents, that rises to more than 88%. The, I, now, I realize that the, that the NC DOT model, when it is run, even the new model, is not going to support a conclusion that I-26 should not be widened to at least six lanes. And my view, and the view of many, is that the model is fundamentally flawed, that it has consistent, models similar to this have consistently predicted much higher traffic volumes that have historically actually occurred. And we encourage the city to press NC DOT to take in, to take other factors into consideration and not rely on the model to make this decision. Another question that we asked, "Amboy Road and Meadow Road are planned to be widened to four lanes with a median divider." That was the plan of the, of the MTP at that time. "This includes reconstructing the Amboy Road-I-240 interchange and building a new bridge over the French Broad River. The project is expected to cost more than $145 million. Amboy Road serves Carrier Park and French Broad River Park. With respect to Amboy Road, I support this project." And only 29% supported the project. 70%, more than 70%, opposed any widening of Amboy Road, and 65% supported a redesign of the, of the bridge over the French Broad River to make it more pedestrian and bicycle-friendly. Among Iwana members, that rose to 83% opposing the widening and 78% supporting a more pedestrian and bicycle-friendly bridge. Another question, "A new bridge over the French Broad River is planned to carry I-26 traffic. I-26 would be relocated to run behind West Gate, and the bridge would be built to the north. What should be done with the existing Captain Jeff Bowen Smokey Park Highway Bridge?" The choices were keep the current shared I-240-Pattin Avenue configuration, and only, less than 15% supported that. The, more, about 63% of respondents and 75% of Iwana members supported a, essentially what is consistent with Alternative 4, Alternative 4B. And I-26 is planned to be widened to six or eight lanes north of I-240 to exit 25, the UNCA exit, in the next five years and later, and later into Madison County at an estimated cost of $190 million. I support this widening, and only less than 25% supported the widening. 74% opposed the widening of this section to eight lanes. The plan also calls for a reconfiguration of the I-40, I-26, I-240 interchange to allow all directional turnoffs and improvements to the Brevard Road interchange at a cost of more than $157 million. Almost 75% supported addressing this problem... Almost 75% supported addressing this problem, and, and, and so, you know, there's broad support for fixing the problems. There's incredibly broad support for not doing it in, in an impactful way. We highly applaud City Council for drafting this resolution, and in-city staff for, for their comments. The, want to urge, working for a beneficial design, which you all are on the road to do, realize that the Bowen Bridge is a great focus of, of this work, but it should not be the only focus. Highly encourage to, to adopt as much as possible of the Asheville Design Center design, and I just want to say that 4B only reflects a watered-down version of the Asheville Design Center design, so there's a lot of room there. The, you know, the East-West Asheville Neighborhood Association just undertook a visioning process, and something that was very highly, that was very highly supported by our membership was walkability and bikability. So, so these things, you know, we strongly support these things being encouraged, and is my time up?
Not yet.
Okay. Okay, great. We also want to draw attention to the Haywood Bridge. The, the, we, the plans that are in place by, by NC DOT have what are basically suburban-style interchanges, which throw traffic onto Haywood Road at incredibly high speeds. We recommend keeping the urban interchange on Haywood Road, and we recommend making that bridge much more pedestrian and bicycle-safe, widening the sidewalks, raising the height of the, of the, of the fencing on the sides of the bridge, and making it prettier if we can. Preserving Hanover Street, and preserving the commercial buildings on, on Haywood Road, and I thank you for, for your time and attention.
Thank you, Ted.
Wait, you just cited a whole bunch of really great statistics. Can we, is there a, like a one-page summary? Is there something we could submit to—
I can, I can email the Survey Monkey results of, of that survey.
Yes.
Yes, I will do that.
Well, and if you want to submit it to DOT yourself, that would be great, or if you would like us to do it, then, then do it that way. But I think that it's worthwhile to submit this, since it, it sounds very comprehensive. Thank you for your effort.
Thank you.
Okay, council, well, first, let me do this. Everyone, that's who I had signed up to speak on I-26. Are there other people in the audience that want to be able, okay, so we've got, raise your hand if you want to talk about I-26. I got one, two, three, four, five, six. Now, raise your hand if you're a 10-minute person. Okay? So that's five plus seven. So, I think what we need to do is take our break. We have a closed session. At least one item, right? Two items. So let's do that, because I know we have a number of folks that also signed up to speak at the very end, so we, we need to knock out our closed-session items. This is your motion. Look, oh, eye-rolling already. Geez, okay, you're—
Keith, I really missed this.
All right, here we go.
I move that the Asheville City Council go into closed session for the following reasons. Number one, to prevent disclosure of information that is privileged and confidential pursuant to the laws of North Carolina, and not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes. The law that makes the information privileged and confidential is North Carolina General Statute 143-318.10A3. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A1. Number two, to consult with an attorney employed by the city about matters with respect to which the attorney-client privilege between the city and its attorney must be preserved, including but not limited to a lawsuit involving the following parties: Rebecca Robertson, Juan Nier, Crystal Weatherly, and the City of Asheville. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3.
Second. All right, all those favorably say aye.
Aye.
All right, and we will take 20 minutes, whatever that is. Thank you for that. There were a few other people that wanted to comment on the I-26 comments, as it were. Please go ahead and let me know who you are, and we'll start that. Joe, you're, you want to—
Hi, my name is Joe Minichuk. Oops, am I on? Yeah, okay. I have, I have three people to give up their time, so do you want me to have them raise their hands?
One, two, is that—
Valerie, it was—
Oh, over here, you got three.
Okay. I'm not going to take the full 10 minutes. As you know, as a former member of your planning commission, and also served as one of the, one of the founding members of the Asheville Design Center, I've done a lot of presentations on this. But my new role is, is I work for—
The audience is telling me they can't hear you. Are you sure it's on, Becky? It doesn't sound like—
Is this one on? It doesn't sound, oh, they're on.
Now it's on.
Boom.
Thank you, tech gods, wherever you are.
So I have a, I have a planning and economic development firm, where we do economic analysis for cities, counties, regions, and we do, like, basically a tax study of economic development. What I've offered to the Design Center, and also what I'm going to do as my public comment, is focus on how I feel as a professional, this is being reviewed as a document. That, we're in, it's a very important process to be doing this review. Putting your comments in is incredibly important. This resolution is super-important as well. This is all part of the NEPA Act, which came out in the 60s, all because of the impacts that were put upon communities by these highway projects. So that act basically says, you're supposed to know your aesthetic issues, your, your social impacts, your cultural impacts, and where you can avoid them. If you can't avoid them, you mitigate the impact. So first and foremost, you're supposed to avoid the impact, period. So, in Burton Street, a church gets hit. There are ways to not hit that church, there are ways to not design the, or to design the highway to not impact that property. If I have to check on a box and say, "You're taking a church," I, as a professional, have to first find a way to mitigate that. So as a professional doing this review, I'm making that part of my comment, that, "Why didn't you do that? Why didn't you put another alternative that was reasonable to not taking that church?" Sound wall, or retaining wall, there's lots of other ways you can mitigate that before you take the property, because that is of cultural significance. Just to, let's see if this works this way. So, that's the law at the top, right there. It says, "Methodology, scientific, and in scientific accuracy. They shall identify," and what I mean "they," they means this report that you get, the DEIS. "Any methodologies used and shall make explicit reference by footnote or scientific or otherwise relied upon the conclusions in this statement." What I've done is I've dropped this little table in here. This is the table that they use to, to judge impacts in neighborhoods. And just to show you a couple of things, well, first of all, they don't have any, the table just appears, and there's no backup document into how they created that table. So there should be some weighting system of what qualifies as low burden, what qualifies as high burden. And just to show you a couple of issues that I have, this is, on the right, on the right here, this is over by Montford, between Hillcrest and Montford. For Alternatives 4 and 4B, you all know that little back access that you can take on the side of Hillcrest to kind of cut into Cortland back up in Hillcrest. That gets snipped off by the highway, so we no longer have that access. So they call that a moderate burden to the community, right? Which, okay, that's fair. Yet, here's in Alternative 3, they cut into Burton Street, take a significant number of real estate holdings, properties, houses, a church, yet they call that a moderate burden here. So as a planner, I'm like, well, how can these both be the same impacts? How can these both be the same burden to both of these communities? I feel that that's unfair, right? So that's, that's one of the comments I want to make. There are things like, you know, rectify the impact by repairing or rehabilitating or restoring the affected environment. When you look at Hillcrest, part of the goal of the CCC report, the community's continued comment, the Asheville Design Center, was rectifying that wrong that was done to Hillcrest generations ago. So it's mending that community together. When you look at how they evaluated the project, for Alternative 3, they say, "Oh, we didn't touch that area over there, we're neutral." So they just basically cut out that boundary and say, "We're not making that part of our project area," which they can't do. If they're holding 4B and 4 to that standard, they should be holding 3 to that standard. So that's known as, I think Don has, Don Kostelak has the term name, I think it's called logical termini. So you're supposed to have the same boundary for all of these. So as you go through the document, what you'll find is that there are errors in the document, but this is, again, this is the time to catch it. It's called a draft for a reason. But finally, I'm just going to close with the economic analysis. We're trying to run the model for you pro bono. We're going to go ahead and do that. We're having a hard time opening the drawings because of the way that they save them, but when we get that, we'll have that for you. And I offer my services to you all. I'd love to volunteer to help with this, and I offer my firm to help as well. But what we found with the economic analysis and the economic report is they're essentially using 2007 data, which was a little while ago, and this, things have changed financially. The other thing that they do is they basically punt all the land that we've been asking for, for our community. Now, when I was with the Design Center and we did the analysis, that's about $700 million worth of economic development, real estate value, for the community. What that represents is $111 million of city, county, and school taxes over the useful life of this project. Yet, when you read the economic analysis, they say this is too insignificant to talk about. So I'll just defer to you all. Do you think $111 million is insignificant?
We wish we had $111—
Yeah, so maybe they can reward you with that. So anyway, that's going to be part of my comment. I'll be glad to share that letter with you all when I draft it. But again, those, it's erroneous to use such old data and then just go ahead and flat-out ignore the, the real estate. There is a term in IST, which is yet another, another act, I mean, these are federal acts that give us this, this credibility. IST actually has a term called "value capture," which directly talks about building real estate against local roads. The best that I could figure out, and I think, I think Julie hit it on the head, that this is designed at such a high level, connecting two states very far away, that they really aren't getting the details right at the local level. And this is what the federal acts are here to protect us for, to make it fit our community. So it's not about, you can still make it fit the community and still make it meet the needs of these, of the regional transportation system. But thank you.
Thank you. Okay, who else wanted to speak? All right.
Mayor, City Council, residents, my name is Steve Rasmussen, and I'm here representing I-26 Connectus. I don't need 10 minutes, though. I'd like to read our statement on the city's resolution. "The I-26 Connectus Project represents the Asheville neighborhoods that stand to be most impacted by the I-26 Connector Project, as well as several civic organizations advocating for responsible alternatives for the North Carolina Department of Transportation's Expansion Project. These neighborhoods include West Asheville, Burton Street, and Montford. Other groups represented include Mountain True and Asheville on Bikes. We have been working together since 2009. As such, the I-26 Connectus Project has prepared the following statement on the City of Asheville's resolution now before you. The I-26 Connectus Project applauds Asheville City Council for responding to the concerns of the residents who would be most directly harmed by NC DOT's oversized and ill-conceived highway expansion. We are encouraged by the city's call on NC DOT to sit down at the table with city representatives to come up with a better plan that reduces the footprint of this project, does less damage to our neighborhoods and business corridors, and helps make Asheville more walkable and bikable." Excuse me. "The city has endorsed Alternatives 4 and 4B for Section B. We do not. Of the current alternatives presented by NC DOT, the I-26 Connectus Project endorses no option because none yet represents what we want to see for Asheville. However, we agree that Alternatives 4 and 4B do provide the best starting point and framework for reaching the desired outcome, but much work remains to be done, even on these alternatives. It is important that we recognize that Asheville is a city, and NC DOT as an institution is not an expert in urban design. Rural and suburban highway solutions will not work for a dense urban environment. NC DOT has prioritized through traffic and cars and trucks traveling at high speeds, but Asheville needs a plan that puts the needs of local commuters, neighborhoods, and business owners first, and protects our community's access to the French Broad River for use as a recreational asset. We urge the residents of Asheville and Buncombe County to stand with us in support of the resolution before City Council, and for better alternatives from NC DOT, and encourage residents to visit i26connectusproject.org to learn more and take action." Thank you.
Mr. Rasmussen?
Yeah.
Could you list again the neighborhoods that you're representing?
They include West Asheville, Burton Street, and Montford. Those are the principal ones that our, our group has—
And is that the Burton Street resident Neighborhood Association position?
I'll let, oh, Dwayne was here earlier. I understand that it is. Dwayne is, Dwayne Barton has, has been a part of our group throughout, and, yeah, so that, this, this also represents their position.
And you'll be submitting those comments as well to the DOT, or would you like us to have—
Yes, if you would. I'll hand it to—
I'd say hand it to Maggie, but maybe you should hand it to Ken. I don't know, either way.
Thank you.
Okay, yep, back there.
Hey, Mayor and Council members. For the record, Don Kostelak, I could probably wear many hats here, more officially with the city, the Multimodal Commission, but like Joe, a transportation planning consultant. I really appreciate both the time and effort that you and the city staff have put in it. I think the thoroughness of both the resolution and the staffs reflect a lot of the things that I know a lot of us have worked on. We've kind of joked that if we were to actually invoice DOT for our time, it would more than pay for the match that you guys are having to pay for the bike and ped facility. So I'll leave that up to you to put in your resolution. For this, I think we'd get our money back that way. The only thing I would have with regard to the resolution, before I get into my other comments, would be that the clause in there in the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th, whereas, about traffic, congestion, and safety are continuing problems. I'd prefer a word like concerns or challenges, and I'll explain a little bit of why, why I feel problems is a little bit overstating it as I go through my comments. I do appreciate the city's endorsement of the Alternative 4 or 4B, and I understand the, the reasons why a more specific one was not chosen, and I do hope we can also get the county to support that same resolution. In looking through how public comments are reviewed, the stated preference of an alternative is important in the process for DOT. And as long as alternatives are regularly on the level with an environmental impact, it is things like comments, especially those from governing bodies, that can help push that over, and I think that's why that piece is important. I also appreciate the stance on the southern section, it was Section C, in terms of minimizing that, and we just endured five years of construction to now endure more in the next few years. And my only hopes were, and Alan McGwin will address on the Section A, is that I would prefer a preference for a no-build on it, because we're not giving an option, given an option other than an eight-lane, but as he will state, a preference for a no-build, but saying we would support an alternative that included six lanes. So if there's some leeway in the comments, that would be great. Alan has some of that documented. In a more general sense, traveled to the Chicago at Thanksgiving, and I was on Interstate 80/94, two cross-country interstate highways going to the nation's freight hub. And we talk about Charleston and their— And we talk about Charleston and their port. Well, Chicago's a freight hub that makes Charleston look like Joe's Trucking Company in terms of what they use. And I-8094, two cross-country interstates that run together south of Chicago, has the same width as NCDOT is proposing through West Asheville. That is the scale problem we are talking about and why that statement is important. In other matters, economics and job creation. I know we don't like congestion, and I know we think it's bad, but in 2014, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, the national governing body for engineers in their journal, cited a study of congestion and economic growth for 88 U.S. metro areas. And the finding was economies do not stagnate as a consequence of traffic, and the best predictors of economic growth have more to do with a dense urban core and regional economic demand than the quantity of the transportation infrastructure. And to me, the research and the data that's driving this is starting to unveil those kind of things for our cities, so I hope that it can be reflected. And finally, and I know my time is up, I fully support the Design Committee recommendations in there and think that is imperative, and would be happy to serve and donate any time in an official or unofficial role as that unfolds. Thank you.
And again, if you have your comments in writing, anything available and you could submit?
Oh, yes.
Us or submit it directly to the community?
Thank you.
Thanks for the photo this morning.
Mayor and City Council, thanks for the opportunity to make comment. I'll be brief. My name is Alan McGwin. I'm on the board of the Asheville Design Center, so I'm here on behalf of the Asheville Design Center. We definitely support your resolution. In fact, we're going to write a letter in support of your resolution that we're going to send to DOT as well. Also, I applaud you for including the CCC goals. We've been working toward those goals for a long time. We spent a lot of time on that. The third thing, I think the working group that you're talking about putting together is a great idea, and we offer, like I say, we've done this for a long time, and you can see we have, happens to be on the ADC board as well, so we have a lot of engineers and urban planners that have a lot of experience and have worked on this project for a while, and we offer their help if you need us on that group. So I want to thank you for the resolution and thanks for your time, and if we can help, let us know what we can do. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mike Sewell. Wait, which one? This one? There we go, all right.
We've got to move that one back, sorry.
My name is Mike Sewell. I'm the Director of Asheville on Bikes, and I want to thank Council, specifically Julie Mayfield, for all of your work and her work, and also Ken Putnam and the Asheville Transportation Staff for all of their work on this project. The idea of the city working with NCDOT is something that is extremely exciting to me personally and also to the organization of Asheville on Bikes. Specifically, I can cite that in 2008, when Asheville City Council passed the Bicycle Comprehensive Plan, the Asheville Transportation Department has done a remarkable job on very limited resources, but really diving in to understanding the needs of active transportation, bicycle and pedestrian specifically. While NCDOT does have a complete street policy, their enthusiasm and their history of implementing infrastructure that works for all people traveling by a variety of modes does not rise to the level of the city's commitment. So this is really another great opportunity for the city of Asheville to partner constructively and to really lead the needs for active transportation. Asheville on Bikes, also, we are obviously part of the I-26 Connector Project. We support the letter. The resolution and what our Policy Committee has done is we've gone through the EIS, and then we went through the Asheville Comprehensive Bike Plan, which NCDOT funded and endorsed. We went through the Greenway Master Plan and even Connect Buncombe, and where we found deficiencies in places that were disconnected and will create more disconnectivity, we've found ways to patch that. So our, I'm going to give you a copy, I sent you one already. Our recommendations address things like the Haywood Interchange, the West Asheville Greenway, Patton Avenue Pedestrian Bridge, Over 240, the West Gate Plaza, Amboy Road, Brevard Road, State Street, Sand Hill, and Bear Creek Road. We've made specific recommendations on how to either enhance or preserve active transportation infrastructure. So thank you for all your work. I'll leave these comments with you.
Thank you for all your work. Your comments were very thorough that you emailed us earlier today. And anyone else wishing to comment? Okay, in the back? Yes.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you folks. I'm excited about the resolution. I really appreciate the effort that's going into this. Sitting here, I'm not representing any organization, just a person who lives in West Asheville and loves where I live.
Do you state your name?
My name is Anna Colasike. I was stunned by what happened earlier in this meeting with a statement that about 10 years ago or more, the Business Association apparently would not support the idea of a connector outside of the city. And I don't know what the date of that decision was, but what struck me was the changes that we've seen in Asheville in the last 10 to 15 years. And I would suggest to you that the paradigm, there has been a paradigm shift in Asheville. And I can understand why 15 years ago, the Business Association would have said, please bring a major highway system right into our city. However, in the last 15 years, we have a completely different paradigm. And for that reason, I would hope that we could make the best effort to delay this project and to reconsider the changing paradigm so that we could bring back the effort to make that exchange happen well outside of our city, because we don't need that kind of traffic in our city, that kind of traffic in our city. And the other comment I want to make is also, I was aware that about 10 years ago, many friends of mine spent hundreds of hours at public hearings. And Julie, you made a reference to that, and I'm glad that's on record. I don't know where those hearings, the results of those hearings exist on record, but when the people in my town, West Asheville, made it very clear after these hundreds of hours to the DOT at the time that eight lanes was completely inappropriate, and were told, oh, we hear you. If the DOT did hear the voice of West Asheville and Asheville, then why did they come back in 2015 with a proposal for an eight-lane highway? So I'm not in a place of trust right now because I'd like to know where those records, I'm sure those records exist. I hope that the DOT is not only accepting input from people between now and the 16th of the month, but are those records going back a few years available for the DOT? And are they interested in looking at them again?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else wishing to provide comment? Yes. Remember, we don't have a motion yet, just reminding us, anyway.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Timothy Sadler, and I actually want to echo the comment of the last speaker and of the first speaker who spoke. To Julie's point, this is the biggest infrastructure project we'll see in our time, and if there is a way of going outside of the city for this project, you know, I think that it should be the first thing that we consider. You know, to that point, it might make sense to go back and see what the thought process was behind bringing it through the city, and speak to some of those folks, and kind of offer a contrast in terms of where we are now and why it really doesn't make sense at this point to bring this project through the city. Most importantly, when, you know, if, when we look at this other option, it might turn out to be a lot less costly, and, you know, while it might be difficult to make the case of changing directions, I'm sure that the state would respond to a less costly option. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is anybody cold? Are you too cold? You look like, okay, I'm starting to, it's really cold in here. Yeah. Now I might actually be cold, too, but I'm seeing people put on their jackets. That's part of our plan, is to freeze you out. No, I'm just kidding. So is there anyone else who hasn't had an opportunity yet to talk about I-26, who hasn't yielded their time? Okay. Yes?
I just wanted to ask a question. So in dealing with DOT--
You're looking at Ken. This is a Ken question.
Well, yeah, I think it's a Ken question. When you're dealing with DOT, is it, is it like the volume of responses they get, or the volume of how many times particular people have made a comment that would weigh in? I guess what I'm asking, kind of for the benefit of these groups that have put together letters, like, would it make sense for Asheville on Bikes to make sure that everybody that is any way related to Asheville on Bikes copy that letter and send it to DOT? Or is, because it's from a group, does that carry a lot more weight?
Well, it's a semi-difficult question to answer, but I think in the old days, before we had all the technological advances that we have today, it probably was very difficult for the DOT or any organization to sort through all the comments they would have gotten. And I think back to many of the transportation improvement project meetings they would have across the state in the 14 divisions, they would have at least one, maybe two meetings, and they would get comments, and the meetings would go on for hours. I think, though, the important thing is, and even today, I think the important thing is that the message is there loud and clear, and what we've heard, especially from the groups, there's been a lot of thought put into their reasoning, and those comments definitely need to get there now. Like, I'll use Asheville on Bikes as an example, because Michael was one of the last ones up here. I hope, and I assume he plans to send his comments straight to the DOT, but we also received them today. And my intent, and I'm planning to do it tomorrow, is I'm forwarding that same email, those same comments to the DOT, to, you know, the contacts there, because I, you know, I want to make sure that they at least get one copy of those comments. The DOT, I feel confident in today's climate, today's world, they will, they're obligated to, and they will go through those comments, and they will weigh them. But if they get 1,000 copies of that, no, I don't think that's going to mean that news will rise to the top versus the others. But I think it's important in this whole process that we make sure they at least get one copy.
Okay.
So there's going to be redundancy. I hope that answers your question.
Okay, no, perfect, thanks.
Any other questions? Comments or a motion?
I have one comment. I thought the suggestion for paragraph five, changing it from problems to challenges or concerns, I like that edit.
I like challenges.
Challenges. And then I have one comment, and then I'll make a motion on this unless someone else wants to discuss it first. My comment is that what I intend to do personally, not as, this is not council action, is suggest to DOT that they put toll booths on a couple of spots along probably 295, and have what they call congestion pricing, so that you have to pay a toll during rush hour and you don't pay a toll other times. And I think they would find very quickly that we don't have a problem here at all. Don sent along a picture this morning of, from the Haywood Bridge, of the congestion on all four lanes there through West Asheville. There was no traffic at 8:30 this morning, zero traffic, no cars in the distance visible. A lot of it's just distribution of traffic, and if people can make a choice based on economy to not drive if they don't have to at certain times, they will do that. It works in other cities, and I think they could do that in the meantime, while they're, if they're five or six years out on this project, why not find out if four lanes is sufficient? You know, that would be a real surprising thing for them to do. Anyway, otherwise, I really support this resolution, and I move that we approve this resolution to the North Carolina Department of Transportation.
I'll second. Okay. Have a motion in a second. Anyone else wishing to comment or have a question or anything?
Yeah, Julie, thank you so much for taking so much leadership on this. Here you are in your first full meeting, and you're just Marshall in this thing. It's impressive and inspiring, I appreciate it. When you were talking about the active participation, the side-by-side work that the city is going to be doing, city and the county is my hope, alongside NCDOT, and that we'll have regular updates here to this body, and so I would encourage all of the various stakeholders, neighborhood groups and the business groups, and everybody who is going to be impacted by this, which is pretty much everyone who lives here, to know that we're going to be seeing that regularly here, and so to continue to tune in. And it's my hope that we can have that formalized either through the city blog, the city source, just to make sure that we're getting as much of this process information out as possible so everybody can see, can see how this is going. I think it'll be interesting for DOT to experience that level of transparency and process, and also just really important so no one at the end of this is surprised at what, where we get. And I'm optimistic we'll get to a better place. In regards to Section A, I would agree that we don't need eight lanes through there, and so I'm really, I like what the resolution has to say about that. But I wanted to ask you, Julie, if they're modeling Section C for eight lanes and Section B for eight lanes, how are they going to come up with anything other than eight lanes for Section A?
It's a good question, and we're, we're going to be talking to them about that. I mean, it is an entire corridor, and if you model eight lanes south of 240, I mean, south of I-40, and you model eight lanes north of Broadway, and you try to squeeze it into a four or six-lane footprint, it could be problematic, so it's, we need to try to, we need to try to look at the whole corridor.
And to self-edit, I meant I-240, by the way.
Yeah.
I was reading about I-295.
Well, I'm, as I've said all along, I'm going to stand with Burton Street Neighborhood. I really appreciate, Steve, you being here and representing them. If that's going to come through with eight lanes and further devastate that neighborhood and take that church and build on the footprint of urban renewal, I won't be supportive of any of that. Section C, the Southern, is really way overbuilt. They had a different design the last time, last time around, and this time around, they came up with this new three down there, this new version down there. It's $100 million more expensive. Go backwards a few years, when we were talking about Alternative Four-B, they were saying, no, you can't do that because it's $100 million more expensive.
Yeah.
So just to know, when they're talking about costs, I think there's a lot more wiggle room there than they might intimate. So it's overbuilt and $100 million too expensive, probably. Section B is also overbuilt. I think we have to be mindful throughout of urban renewal and make sure that we are not taking new steps towards urban renewal by carving into Emma Community and inflicting this infrastructure damage-- you can't do that because it's $100 million more expensive.
Yeah.
So, just to know, when they're talking about costs, I think there's a lot more wiggle room there than they might intimate. So, it's overbuilt and $100 million too expensive, probably. Section B is also overbuilt. I think we have to be mindful throughout of urban renewal and make sure that we are not taking new steps towards urban renewal by carving into Emma Community and inflicting this infrastructure damage on the poor. So, just want to put that out there as well, so I'm going to be really conscious about... Julie Mayfield was awesome at the NC DOT hearing. She got up, and she, and I'm not going to try to do what she did, but I just want to talk about it for a second. She took this letter that she'd written to Duke Energy. Now, Duke Energy has really made some changes in their behavior lately. They're, you know, they're getting away from the coal, they're going to incorporate the solar, they're doing away with the transmission lines, and they're working with us on these substations. It seems like Duke's really turned a corner with this community, and has decided, well, we're going to have to kind of become better partners here. So Julie got up and took a letter about that change that Duke's undergone, but inserted NC DOT, and where it said "energy," she put "transportation," and gave DOT, said to DOT at this hearing, here's what this might look like if you decided to be, to come on as a partner with this community. And so, I really applaud that vision that you brought that day, and it's one that I hope we carry forward into this process. Because if NC DOT can come on, it's not only Asheville it wins, it's every community in North Carolina that then has a template. So Asheville taking leadership statewide on this transportation is really important. So, that's, I just wanted to get all that out there.
Yes. Before we actually vote on it, just wanted to see if there were any additions or changes.
Well, I'm wondering if we want to add... When I heard the motion and second to approve, I assumed it was the edited version that you are keeping track of. Yes, I am keeping track of it, and I have another thing, which we don't have to include, which is to maybe memorialize in the resolution this idea of city council regularly report, or the city regularly reporting back to the public about the progress of the new... Yeah, I think we can do maybe just sort of forehead nods at Gary that we want to make that part of the process. Okay. Although this could be a living document that we... We can, we do not have to include it. There we go. Motion, can you have...
I'm done.
Okay. Anybody else? No? No. Okay. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yep.
Okay. We have adopted the amended resolution to go to the NC DOT on I-26. Thank you. Okay. Yeah, yeah. All right. So I have a number of people that are signed up. We're at the end of our agenda, right? Yes. I'm trying to make sure. All right. That is the end of our printed agenda, and now is the portion of the council meeting where folks can comment during our public comment period. Again, this is a three-minute opportunity, and I'm going to start with the folks that I have signed up to speak, and don't feel obligated to stay. I know some people are quietly making their exit. The first one I have is John. I'm never, say, your parkourer. Here, here, yes.
I'm here, Mayor, council members, to ask that you expedite the expansion of the home-stay ordinance to include ADUs. Now, it's my understanding that there needs to be, prior to development of an ordinance, a tasking of the planning folks to put together the wording and do the analyses that will be required for the council to study. It's also my understanding that has not yet been given, and I'm here to ask that it be done tonight. We're very concerned, given the length of the process and the fact that it's impossible right now to rent an ADU without incurring a fairly onerous penalty. So we'd like to see that process expedited as much as possible.
Okay. And we've got a couple other folks that want to talk about that issue, so we'll move through all the public comment period, and then council will have an opportunity to discuss that.
Okay. Great.
Thank you. All right. Jackson Tierney.
Good evening, Jackson Tierney. I am part of a group that formed, I guess about a month or so ago, a bunch of ADU owners. So we're getting together, just trying to think about our next steps. Three weeks ago, as the council knows, you approved the home-stay rules, expansion to include lots of aspects, and I think, you know, as part of the whole STR topic, this was kind of the first salvo. Gordon made a comment to say that, you know, it's really important that we get this right. And I think the first actions that the council took on that were right. I think you struck a nice balance between the neighborhood integrity and some of the entrepreneurial ship that some of the homeowners want to do for renting out a room. So, I know it was a long, hard battle, but I think the first indications to the community, the people I've been talking to, said that you really kind of walked that line and thread that needle quite effectively. Also, at the last meeting, there was a lot of talk about ADUs and some, maybe some change of views of the people on the council to move in that direction. But of course, as with a lot of things, there are some code and other issues that need to be smoked out, and we do recognize that takes time. But as the old Chinese proverb says, the journey of a thousand miles starts with the first step. So now that the new council is in place, we certainly would urge them to at least acknowledge that ADUs could be a possibility as part of the home-stay definition, and kick off staff to at least start to work, come back after the first year with some of their findings, and then make some decisions from there. So again, thank you to the council for a great first start, and I look forward to future meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Valerie Ho.
Good evening, Mayor Manheimer, city council members, and congratulations to the new city council members. My name is Valerie Ho. Why are Asheville citizens feeling so passionately about creating a green space in front of the Basilica at this time? Is it that Asheville downtown is at a critical juncture in the speed of its growth? Seven new hotels and several big-box stores moving in? In the '60s, city council planned to raise 85 downtown buildings to build a mall. The reason then is the same as now, the need for more tax dollars. Luckily for Asheville, instead of a mall, we can thank a dedicated group of citizens who successfully saved the beautiful downtown we have today, and somehow Asheville survived. I would like to quote Seth McCormick, Associate Professor of Art History at Western Carolina University, whose article, "The Past is Present," in The Mountain Express expresses beautifully why, alongside great people, which Asheville has in abundance, great architecture is the single most important social, cultural, and economic asset a city can possess. A city that allows development to encroach upon and obscure its architectural landmarks is a city that, to the visiting tourist or lifestyle investor, has no visible past, and its tourism and hospitality industries have no future. What will prospective visitors see first when they search the internet for information about Asheville? A downtown skyline swarming with cranes and clogged with bland corporate high-rise condominiums and hotels? Or alongside images of the Blue Ridge Mountains and the historic Biltmore Estate, photos of a unique architectural treasure framed by the view from an adjacent park, just as Biltmore's grandeur is enhanced by its surrounding gardens? Mr. McCormick has put into words what these 4,000 petition signers feel, and someone will be bringing up petitions. In 10 or 20 years' time, as even more development goes up around Asheville, will city council be thanked for creating a green space, or will they be thanked for another development? The answer is obvious. Mayor, members of city council, please don't ignore the truly passionate feelings of your friends, neighbors, and downtown businesses to keep green that one small valuable piece of city property. Vote to stop the sale of that property and commit now to a course of action that will make this green space in front of the Basilica happen, and you know the citizens will be behind you all the way. Thank you.
Thank you. John Morris.
Mayor Manheimer, council, members of the public, my name's John Morris. This is Kathleen Lyons. We're residents of Asheville. We live in the Monford community. And our purpose in being here tonight is to present you with a binder of signed petitions in support of the St. Lawrence Green Space. The petition itself reads as follows. "We, the undersigned, hereby request that Asheville City Council preserve the city-owned property in front of the Basilica of St. Lawrence for future use as public green space, and vote against the sale of that property for commercial development." A total of 4,389 individuals signed this petition, 2,270 of them in person, while an additional 2,119 signed on the St. Lawrence Green Space and the Change.org websites. We're also including two other binders containing essentially the same petition, adding another over 5,500 signatures in support of this idea. Those were collected in 2005. You can see that this is something that's been on the minds of a lot of us for a long time. I myself played only a very small role in gathering these signatures, spending two hours ringing doorbells in the Kinnellworth neighborhood, and another two hours helping to man the St. Lawrence Green booth at the Downtown Leaf Festival. However, I'd like to briefly share with you the first of those two experiences, because I believe it says something important about these signatures that cannot be communicated by their sheer volume alone. I accepted the door-to-door Kinnellworth assignment reluctantly, and only after arguing for doing it at some time other than the planned Sunday evening, 5:00 to 7:00 PM, of course. Who wants to be bothered by an unsolicited caller on a Sunday evening, I thought? Wouldn't our efforts be counterproductive? I had very low expectations and prepared myself for some less-than-friendly reactions. Well, I couldn't have been more pleasantly surprised by the reception that I received. Far from being annoyed, the people I met were almost to a person, not merely supportive, but enthusiastically supportive and eager to talk about the issues that involved. In a nutshell, the prevailing theme was their dissatisfaction with the scope and quality of downtown development, for which the proposed green space was seen as a welcome antidote. In the end, all but one of the 15 individuals or so that I spoke with that day eagerly signed the petition and asked me to place an Imagine St. Lawrence Green yard sign on their property.
You can hand your comments to Maggie, and she'll pass them around.
Sure.
The time is run.
Oh, it has?
Yeah, it, yeah, just be...
Oh, my God. I've only got a couple more paragraphs.
If you'll just hand it...
The best part.
So, yield away. I've got one, two. I need one more. Okay. There you go.
All right. Where was I? Okay. Right. Enthusiastically supportive and eager to talk about the issues involved. In a nutshell, the prevailing theme was the dissatisfaction with the scope and quality of downtown development, for which the proposed green space was seen as a welcome antidote. In the end, all but one, blah, blah, blah. The person who was working with me on the other side of the street, also a first-time signature gatherer, had a similar experience, and I subsequently learned that ours was the typical reception experienced by other, more experienced petition circulators. What I learned that evening was that the choice between selling that property for commercial development and using it for public green space was, for these individuals, a no-brainer, for sure. But in no way was it an uninformed, knee-jerk reaction to an oversimplified choice. I don't mean to be overly dramatic, but surely I would be remiss if I failed to communicate to you the sincere and deep concern for the well-being of our city that so many of these signers expressed to me and to other St. Lawrence Green petition representatives, and how pleased they were to be able to voice their support for this proposal. At any rate, if you consider the meaning of these 4,389 signatures, I urge you to consider not only the impressive quantity, but, for lack of a better word, their quality as well. Taken as a whole, the thought and feeling behind them is every bit as impressive as their sheer weight in numbers alone. Thanks for the time.
Thank you. The next person I have signed up is Rick. Rick, your last name is hard to read. There you, there you go.
We're together, so we'd like, I think this might take just a little bit more time than three minutes.
Well, so the way it works is you get three, or you have three people yield their time to you. Or, you could speak for three minutes, and you could speak for three minutes.
If it's written, you could take turns reading it, too.
Yeah.
Let us try to make this really quick. This is about PACE. Now, a lot of you know about PACE, Property Assessed Clean Energy Financing. This is a program that's been discussed for a long time, and it got put to sleep because it went through the courts and everything. Well, we're in a different climate now. Not only, we just got out of a meeting this afternoon that, with staff, Amber was there, and Amber Weaver and Maggie Olmeyer were there, and a Green Bond financer on the phone. So, we're in a situation, we're in a new situation now where not only is interest there in the public to do this sort of thing, but there's also now the Green Bond financing in large scale on sort of an exponential curve heading our way right now. So this is available to us, we have a party ready to finance this. We're not talking about any money out of the Asheville coffers. All we're looking for is for you to help maybe encourage direct staff to consider this seriously now we're in this situation. So this is what's been done before. This is what's been done before. You all have passed resolutions asking to reduce carbon significantly. That's not a pie-in-the-sky thing, that's something very realistic. These are basically the global set of renewable energy technologies, maybe missing one or two smaller ones. This red circle, this is what we're going to be able to work with locally. These are the things that we do. We already have contractors in town who do energy efficiency, portable tanks, and geothermal heat pumps. Batteries are coming down the road. I can do this in three minutes.
You're going. You're going well.
So we're not talking about anything slack, you know? This is an example of a commercial school in Texas that's net zero, net zero. Pretty nice-looking school. I understood that Isaac Dixon was designed to be net zero, but I'm not sure if they implemented the program. This school's not only net zero, this shows you that with an extra 2.7 million investment upfront, and that was to put the solar panels on the roof, geothermal's the same price as existing stuff, this school makes nine million over 20 years, and they're ahead of this schedule at this point. So we're talking about, we're talking about a program, PACE, which this body has also passed a resolution, saying that we're going to address PACE. For those of you who knew, my apologies for zipping through this. Okay? So PACE is something that we've already looked at. There's a little bit more on the table, because now there's this thing about Duke and the power plant. And we've committed, to some degree, to being the community part of reducing the energy load for this power plant. Okay? Net zero reduces the energy load to zero. See? This is what's in our hands right now. This is what a lot of people don't really realize. This is an available thing to us.
So, to get the ball rolling here, would it be acceptable to run this through our STC committee and have them review it now that, as you stated, the climate is different?
Exactly. And I think you can also expect an email tomorrow from Sam Rourke, who's the Green Building Council. He's, he just had a great, long conversation with Amber and Maggie, and he's going to work with them to help them learn, because he was involved... with them to help them learn, because he was involved in PACE in Sonoma, California.
Would we, would we agree to that in terms of a process?
I think the process sounds fine. I know Cecil and I have been chasing this dragon for six years, trying to, and to have you show up and let us know that the sun is coming up again on this idea. It's great.
And a little, just a little positive energy from you guys, and we already have, the money's ready to roll. We've got something, we can make something happen.
So, I'm actually even wondering if it needs to go to SASE, because it's already part of the clean energy framework, as you just pointed out, and that's going to be the basis and the starting point for the new partnership with Duke going forward. So, it may be that it's, it's already, it's already kicked off and going.
Well, to the extent the city needs to, to, if there's a to-do list for the city in regard to the program, we would somehow need to have an understanding of what that would be and a recommendation.
Sure.
I agree with the sentiments around the table, Your Honor. The policy direction and strategic goals of council are clear. This is a management project, and the staff's already working with the public commenters tonight, and we'll be happy to continue and update you and seek SASE's advice if we need to come back with additional policy direction.
Excellent. Thank you all very much.
Sorry. Okay. Reverend Amy Cantrell.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, and welcome to our new council members. Thank you all for being public servants. The heart of our sacred, holy days, which for many of us are coming up this month, our love, justice, light, and miracles, some of us are already experiencing our holy days right now. We gathered tonight in front of City Hall with folks from beloved Asheville. We're a community of mostly homeless folks and formerly homeless folks and people living in poverty that live and work and move in the city, just like so many others. And we're reminded by my particular sacred, holy day of Christmas that there are many people, just like the Holy Family that I remember, that walk the streets of Asheville looking for home, looking for shelter. Our Latino friends celebrate this with pesea, where they go and knock on doors and are denied entry over and over again until at the end, the doors are open and they feast and celebrate. And that's the kind of celebration that we want to have in Asheville. We thank some of you who were able to come out tonight, and I know many of you have been working on our affordable housing crisis. We know that we're 5,000 units down in what we need in terms of affordable housing. And as we've said tonight, it's life and death, that half of the folks who died on the streets last year had a housing voucher in their hands. And we had a moment of silence for them tonight and for those that are on the streets tonight. Many, many of our friends spoke to us about noon today and said, "We wish we could come, but we have to be in the shelter at four, or we have to go into our campsites and cat holes." And so, speak for us, speak for us. And so, we do. And so, what we want to say tonight is we support you, and we are here in practice of our holy day not to run out to some commercial place and buy something else, but to say the real work of Christmas is housing our people, housing all our citizens. And so, we urge you to use every tool that you can to do what you've already committed so boldly to, which is 2,800 units. And we hope and pray that we can help speed that along by rolling up our sleeves and working with you. We believe there are three tools specifically that we, we hope that you will work on in 2016, which is to increase money in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, to continue to use land banking and creating policies around land banking in terms of city acquiring land and selling land around affordable housing and for the purpose of affordable housing. And then finally, to pass mandatory inclusionary zoning ordinance so that any new development also includes affordable housing, so that our families, our men, women, and children, 3,000 of them every year, 500 to 600 every night, don't have to wonder where and why there is no room. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And the last person I have signed up to speak tonight is Eric, whose last name starts with a V, and I can't read the rest of it, but—
Good evening, Council. My name's Eric Velas, and I live in South Asheville. I'm a fireman with the City of Asheville. And I'm here tonight just to share with you what I'm doing in moving forward and trying to help with the affordable housing situation. I have 1.8 acres of land located in South Asheville, just beyond Long Shoals Road. This is just right off of Long Shoals Road. It's own highway business for development. I've been upstairs with city planning, and I've talked with Jeff Stodder and my Bella here, and everybody's been really great with the city to work. I'm stepping forward with the Housing Trust Fund and putting my application in so that we can work together with this land. My intentions are to develop it in a positive way, not to commercialize it, but to work with our needs in the city. And also, if you, we're also looking at land banking, too. So, I just wanted to share that with you tonight. I'm on duty, so I've got to kind of clear out, but I wanted to thank you. And this may feel, congratulations, Mr. Young and Mr. Haines. And I do remember you at the hop when we had the conversation. So, thank you.
Thanks for that great news.
All right, that, that's all the folks I have signed up to speak, but if there's anyone else who hasn't yet been able to speak and wants to, Byron. You know, you're a regular if I call you out by your first name. I'm just saying.
Byron Griner, Downtown Commission, and also past president of the ADA and issues chair. I was thinking we'd have some public comment when you were talking about the design procedure when Todd's report was in front of us, but unfortunately, that didn't happen, so I figured I'd wait and talk a little bit about it. Just wanted to remind everybody that we spent three years working on the master plan. Lot of hours went into that. I'm not defending the current process. It can be tweaked, for sure. But I did want to mention that the Downtown Commission meets with the developers initially in an informal setting, and we get a lot of tweaking done to the design from that. And they're really anxious to meet with us. They want to know the process. They want to make it work within the city. Often, we meet with them twice before it actually goes to the full Downtown Commission. So, we end up with a much better design before it ever gets to our body. So, whether you review a Level Two or a Level Three is certainly up to you, but I just want to say that there is a very good process in place for tweaking. One of the things we request is a complete submission before we review it, and unfortunately, we don't have the teeth in that to insist on it. So, we don't, when we ask for all the materials, we ask for a 3D design, we ask for neighboring buildings, all the things that contribute to a good design, as what was not done with the Indigo, as you mentioned, and the Aloft with the lighting. So, adding some teeth into that process, it's a mandatory review, but a voluntary compliance would help us as well, because we want to bring to you a better program or better design before you ever get it, whether it's a Level Two or a Level Three that you review. I mean, that's totally up to you. The one caveat that I will mention and the one driving force behind this process is I feel like that the developer owes it to understand what the process is and what the rules are. And I remember back to when Tony Fraga brought his proposal in, spent, he did all the right steps. He went to the community. He spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in design and got shot down at council. And I don't think that's the message that we want to send to developers. We want to have a clear process, and we want to make sure so with whatever tweaks that are done, that it's understandable when we get to that point.
You mean the first time around?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, not, not the current building. I know, I know. But it, he did the right things, and I don't want to see a developer go through that again. So, I'm not pro-development. I'm just pro-the process, and I want it understandable so that people know what they have to, have to do to comply. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. On something we didn't already do? I know you can think of something.
Good evening, once again, Mayor and City Council. Timothy, I'm Timothy Sadler, and I wanted to share a, a, a conversation that I had recently with a, an elderly woman who lives in subsidized housing. She had respiratory, she began having respiratory issues and started talking to her neighbors in this apartment complex here in the city limits, and they were having similar symptoms. And it, it, more likely than not, had to do with mold. As we know, the, the climate here is, it grows mold. It's an epidemic in our community. And being that she is, well, she doesn't have money, you know? She wasn't able to get a mold test done. And, you know, I got around to thinking that it might be something to consider, a way that, that folks could have a mold test done, you know, if they don't have the means to pay for it. This apartment complex gets subsidies from HUD, and if a mold test came back positive, they wouldn't be able to get those funds again. So, with the rise in popularity, the rise in popularity we have here, we should definitely, you know, make an effort to make sure that we have the best landlords possible. And so, I wanted to, to share that, that story. And I also, I wanted to make a comment about the design guidelines for downtown and mention that 39% of all carbon emissions are by buildings. Buildings cause 39% of carbon emissions, and I do believe everybody up here on this council believes in, in climate change and the importance of climate control. So, you know, there, there are new products out there that can double and triple our value, the efficiency rating of how buildings are built. So, you know, I would like to see some attention paid to anything we can do to make sure that our buildings are built efficiently. And then, just lastly, no sale of the Basilica property. Two years is going to come by before we know it, and the people will remember that vote.
Thank you. Anyone else? This is a really good first meeting for our new council members. We're going, we're going all the way here. Okay.
Hi, my name's Blaine Perry, and congratulations, everybody who was new in the council. I just wanted to be a voice that represents someone who doesn't see a green space as the best option for that space downtown. As someone who's looking for a house right now, it's hard to find housing and affordable housing in a place I can, my wife and I can find that we can really afford. And I see that, you know, a green space is definitely a better option than, say, a parking lot or, you know, some other terrible alternative. But it would be nice to see some residential spaces going downtown. I feel like that's what downtown is for. It's for concentrated areas where people can walk to places and kind of easily commute and get to places they need to without having to have that many cars coming from the outside areas into downtown. You know, it saves that much, that much traffic and commute. And also, I, I feel like every time, you know, the amount of time, the amount of space that you use there, that saves, say, 20 acres of trees that could get raised in East Asheville or something like that. So, I think it's a way to preserve, preserve some of our, our green spaces that we like outside of the city, you know? If you have fewer people moving outside of the city and utilizing that space and really kind of focusing downtown, I think that's a better use of our land. So, I just want to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We have a couple of items that we should discuss here that came up, so we can provide some direction, and these are, they didn't just go up tonight, so. The first one is the Haywood Street property downtown, and providing some direction on a process for that property. Jerome, I think you're the only one left here representing your group, so you better pay close attention, maybe take some notes here. The, the property is no longer on the market, so that has already happened, but in terms of next steps for the property, we, we, we need a process for, for how to thoroughly vet what's to happen and how that's all going to work. And I know we keep talking about PED. Maybe we need to, like, bifurcate this committee, but, but, but I— Good, all right.
I've been thinking about steps to take, and it seems to me that the essential first decision we need to make is what the streets are going to be like there. Our Transportation Department has come up with ideas, and the Asheville Design Center has come up with ideas, how to improve the intersection in front of the Civic Center and Basilica there. There are ways to make that place better, and the roads are going to define what we do from there forward. So, I'd love to get that input first to discuss, okay, what, what shape is it going to be? Are we going to leave the roads the way they are? Are we going to act on the idea that was advanced of taking the road next to the library that goes down to the parking deck there and making that a road straight through to Battery Park? That would isolate the area there, and then if it was only a right turn off of Flint onto Haywood, we're talking about a space that could be used for public events with no traffic at all, and the cars could still get around. I mean, that's the kind of ideas the Design Center's been advancing, and I think that has to be the first decision. And then, from, we don't have to do that right away, but if we know where we're headed eventually, we aren't going to plant trees where there's going to be a highway, or a street, not a highway, a street later, we aren't going to think about. And then, what I'd like to see next, and it is, and again, this might go through PED, is to let the Design Center or other input come in about some demonstration ideas. They've already got a list of demonstration ideas that they could install relatively cheaply, and we have donors who are willing to pay for this, and let people see what could happen there. A demonstration garden? You could, we could build raised beds with volunteer labor and materials on the existing parking lot. That doesn't, we're not going to have a big cost there. We're talking about, do people want to see a demonstration garden there? What about a farmer's market or a downtown market in the gravel lot there once the staging is gone for the hotel? I mean, there's things that are not the $20 million or the $2 million or the $500,000 idea, but are in the tens of thousands that people will be willing to donate. And so, I would really love to see this go forward with a, a lot of citizen input and a lot of ideas advanced instead of coming up with a plan. Because, I mean, that cost $22 million or whatever it was for, for the place out front here, and they stuck us with $2 million they never even paid. I think we can do better than that this time. So, that's sort of the direction I think we should go.
So, we would begin at PED, and we would invite the Asheville Design Center to come, and obviously, the church to come, since the land configuration you're talking about will involve their land.
And just, so I'm clear, the, the goal is green space, right?
Public space.
Or public space, I'm sorry, public space. So, whether it's green or purple or whatever. But, but we're not opening it back up to every option. The idea is, the end goal is public space in 8789 Haywood. Am I correct?
That's your position.
Well, I'm asking, I'm asking, is that the direction you are giving PED to start working on a plan for?
Well, so, my understanding is that the Design Center will not work on it unless there are a range of options that they are allowed to present, that include some, some level of development and public space.
I'm not sure how we approach an entity to do planning for the city without having an RFQ process. That's not, that's not a— That's not, that's not a public process. It's just.
Well, so, I mean, we can, maybe PED can explore this. My understanding from conversations with the Design Center is that what they, what they have offered to do, although they, they would like, they would like a very teeny tiny fraction of the compensation we would pay a larger design firm to do this, is to come up with a range of options that can get vetted by the public and have some public review and get public input, but that they would range, that they would not just be pure open space or public space, that they would, they would include sort of, it's sort of their condition for involvement, so to speak. And since they've done more work on this than anybody else, I think they, they're the ones who make sense to actually continue to lead the conversation.
I had a rather different conversation with them, but, but regardless of that, I think what I'm looking toward is people to come forward with ideas. And I say, I don't think it has to be an RFP. I mean, it could be individuals who have ideas they want to pitch to us. But, I mean, for instance, the public, and the Public Art Board is talking about doing public art, temporary art installations. That's the kind of place they could do it, and so.
But how do we get to the part where, what are you envisioning for the opportunity to come forward with ideas? Is that a public forum that we, that we host as a city and everyone just comes and, you know, maybe we have someone who, who, I, I don't know. There's got to be some way to, to provide the opportunity for that kind of input. So, what does that look like?
Which, again, I think PED could take on that role, but I guess I'm sort of stepping back now and saying, wait, I had the impression that we were, that development on that property that was not public space was not on the table anymore. Am I?
That, that's where I'm at. I'm at with.
Did I miss that?
Public space, zero development, and then community conversation to elevate what happens.
I don't think that's ever been.
I'm for public space, huh?
I believe, didn't you say that you were for it if it was paid for with private money?
And we don't have that yet, so what I would be interested in.
We need to have a process to get to the donations.
What I've always thought I was interested in is an exploration of options that would include everything from a combination of a building and, and public space to pure green space, I just said a building, to, to pure green space. I don't think that's new. I don't think that's a different place. And that we look at, included with the design options are the, the costs and benefits of each one. How are you going to get each one paid for? Because those, those numbers are very different.
If we're making a major policy decision tonight about this, I think we need to get it on an agenda. We need to have the public here. I don't think this is the time or place for this conversation. I appreciate that we're just trying to get to a process about how to get to a decision.
Yes.
So, perhaps that would start in a committee.
All right. Well, so, this was helpful to, to understand that there's a range of ideas, maybe, about how to approach this. And Gordon, what you just said was a committee to review a process, so.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I think that it sounds like there's a lot of different people who want to have a lot of options on the table, from green space to other possibilities as well, to have a thorough public process around that as well, to make sure we invite as much of that public comment in as we can. I think everyone's on that page, and then we go from there.
So, I, I mean, I'm happy to have PED sort of start that process in connection with city staff and so that we know kind of, okay, you know, what's legal, what's not legal, et cetera. And then PED hopefully will come to some sort of consensus on a process and then bring that forward to council.
Be great.
Okay, so.
Just happy to do that. Talk about.
Thank you.
I'm still just on this committee with you, by the way.
All right. Okay, so then just to dip our toes into some other controversial items, the other, the other issue that came up tonight was ADUs being brought into the definition of home stays. And I, you know, I have gone on record and said that I am willing to explore that idea. And I think, again, you know. We're going to have another committee, I'm sorry. But, but that, that idea, though, would require a zoning change or an ordinance amendment, which would have to go through P&amp;Z. Typically, when council starts that process, we ask PED to, to take a look at it and then work it through the process from there. Is there, do we have general agreement about looking at ADUs as possibly being pulled into the definition of home stays? And this is accelerated dwelling units, otherwise known as mother-in-law or granny apartments, basement apartments.
I'm for that advancement.
Yes.
That one was a little easier. And there are, I know PED would need to look at this, but also HCD, Housing and Community Development, and then our Affordable Housing Task Force as well.
Advisory.
Advisory, thank you, sorry. Not Task Force, that's the whole one.
And maybe neighborhood advisory. I don't know, I don't know what role they play.
Yes, possibly.
I'll, I'll check in with the folks at NAC to see if that's something that they'd like to see.
Okay, so that was head nodding on that one. It looks like we're, we're good with moving forward on that. Okay. That's all I have on my list. Anybody else have anything? Any news, any announcements? No?
Well, one thing I do want to say is just, no, just, no, just to thank the ex-council members who were on the I-26.
Yes. Jan and Mark.
And the county commissioners and Julie, et cetera, that, you know, because sometimes people go away from council, and it's like we forget all the hard work they did. I mean, I was imagining Mark sitting here, you know, and he, and weighing in and knowing all the hard work. So, I guess I just wanted to say that, and I promise no more.
One last thing. I'll just ask council members to familiarize yourself, if you haven't already, with Ban the Box initiative, and that that's going to be on the Governance Committee agenda in January, and familiarize yourself with any administrative policies that may be coming down the pike and possible resolutions in the future.
Good.
Peace, love, and joy. Holidays.